I'm sorry, May seventeenth. Tonight's school committee meeting is being broadcasted live and there is local media here present. If you wish to have a copy of this broadcast, just reach out to the school committee and we'll provide one for you. Good evening. First off, I'd like to start off the approval of minutes. Does everyone had a chance to look over the minutes? Is everyone kosher? I get our motion to approve the minutes. Motion by Meg, second by Jen. All in favor? Next, announcements, correspondence and distributions. Anybody like to say anything? Announcements, correspondence?
Announcement.
Go ahead.
So, I just wanted to let the community know that next week is the eighth grade Washington DC trip. I actually had the opportunity to go to be a chaperone, so hopefully at our next meeting we'll have to report back some of the ongoings that happened and the, some of the various events and things that we were able to attend. Also, there's the eighth grade heritage week, so for the students that have chosen to stay back, they're also engaged in many other events, so should be fun and looking forward to it.
Any other member?
Maybe just briefly, Joe, last night I had an opportunity along with other administrators and teachers and parents to participate in an interview forum for the assistant principal for the high school. And I really just want to commend the administration. I think we do a really thorough job and I think it says a lot about the caliber of people we're looking to hire. And for people that are available, next Tuesday is one for the Stacy Middle School finalists, so it's a great opportunity to come in and ask questions.
Have you had the, is that your first interview process for?
For an administrator, absolutely, yep.
It's pretty impressive, isn't it? Yeah. I think the same thing, they do an outstanding job. And if I can add, we have three grade finalists that we're in the process of vetting right now. Anybody else like to speak?
I'm all set.
Next on the agenda is invitation to speak. Have anybody to speak out there? Natalie and Madeline, correct?
Yes.
Good evening, how are you guys?
Good, how are you?
Good, what do you got for us?
So, the seniors' last day of school was Wednesday, May sixteenth, and now they're taking part in many senior activities.
Tuesday, May fifteenth, twenty-seven students were celebrated at the Milford Chamber of Commerce Scholars Dinner.
Spring sports will be ending and the seniors will be celebrated at many senior games.
Senior prom is Friday, May twenty-fifth, at Lakeville Pavilion, followed by after prom at PINS.
Senior awards night is Wednesday, May thirtieth at seven, and seniors will be given both awards and scholarships. A select group of juniors will be awarded with book awards as well.
Senior night is Thursday, May thirty-first, and at seven PM, your books will be passed out and the Liptub will be featured, as well as many talented seniors who will perform.
And lastly, graduation is Sunday, June third at noon.
Thank you, girls. Open up to any questions to the committee? Do you have any questions for these two?
Are you girls seniors? I didn't.
Juniors.
You're juniors, okay.
Preview of what's to come.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, John.
Alright, so next on the agenda is student recognition. What we did, we had a teacher, Mr. Candini, Jack Candini, here who had a medical issue a couple of weeks ago and a lot of great students came to the rescue and helped them out and pretty much saved the man's life, so they're not here right now, which, which they should be. Guess they're not here. Jack, I don't know if you would like to come up and say a few words or something on what happened or just fill the committee in or the public?
Well, without discussing the event itself, I'd like to definitely applaud those students that had the wherewithal to act in such a mature fashion in a crisis situation that literally came out of nowhere. And they made all the right decisions at the right time and, you know, I'm so thankful for myself and my family, of course. It's gotten a lot of publicity the past couple of weeks, maybe more than I know I'm happy with, but I think all the recognition and publicity should go to the young people that got involved. It really says something about what's going on, I know in this building in particular, because I sub here quite a bit and I know most of the kids, and these are just good examples of some of the quality young people that are coming through here. So, and that's a credit to everyone that, you know, has something to do with it. And parents right, right through the, you know, faculty and staff of the school, so basically that's, just want to extend like my thanks to them and, and I know you're going to recognize them, I'm sure, so that's, that's really, that's really the way to go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we'll have them in some later time.
Absolutely.
Could I just add one thing?
Sure, go ahead, Jen.
And thank you for coming and sharing that with us tonight, I'm sure. It's getting.
If you want the whole story, just check.
But I do, you know, kind of to your point about commending the students, one thing that I think we're really fortunate to see this year is some really excellent communication from our high school and the email that came out to families after that event. It wasn't specifically about that, but it was really about the way that students looked at things from Principal Josh Ottlin. And it, it's really helpful from the parent perspective to have an insight into what, what the thinking is at the high school and how people are really working with our high school students to commend them when they make really good decisions and to give them instruction kind of in life lessons, maybe when some of their decisions aren't as wise as those that they made in your situation. So, I've been really happy with the communication, both around this and other things that have been coming home to us as well.
Can I just throw one, one thing out to you, Jack, that I, my favorite quote of the whole thing was the fact that you wanted to get back on the ice within a couple of days of.
Well, I had a game the following week, a benefit game, and playing every year from, you know, like play on the list of. And I asked him in hospital, he said, "Well, you can go watch, but." But anyway, you know, I've got goals myself moving forward, that's, that's part of it, to get back to some of my normal activity. Because I'm kind of an active guy, at least I like to think I might have to tap on.
Anybody else have any comments?
Thank you, Jack.
Best of luck in the future. Next on the agenda is the Chrome rollout update. Mr. Joseph?
Thanks for having me in. It's always great to come in front and really talk about some of the great things that are happening and we've been really on this, this forward progress, which has been fabulous. And I know how packed agendas can get and I'm typically told, you know, five minutes, you know, don't go over or whatever typically is, get the, get the look. So I tried to also.
You've got ten minutes tonight.
Ten, that's not bad. I'm going to take some of the time that was just afforded to me. So I, I prepared a few things for, for you tonight, but I'll also kind of go through them and discuss some of the more major points. As you know, eighteen months ago, we had no wireless in any school and no student devices. In September of next year, we're going to have three thousand three hundred Chromebooks launched from grades three to twelve. The first goal we had here when I sat in front of the committee July one last year, when I was hired, was to ensure that we had a robust network, which we, we did. Connect learning to the digital devices, which we're doing. Obtain the devices and train staff. Those have been our big four goals from first day I sat here in front of you to today. And we say them over and over. And it's combined with the learning, with the district goals, and it's becoming one thing as we move forward and it's about students. It's not two separate things and we're trying, you know, sometimes, and this is one of the cases, fixing the plan as we're flying it, because a lot of this is new. But as we start to continue to build efficiency and continue to have the communication from superintendent to assistant superintendent curriculum with building principles, we're able to create a path for success. And we also know how fortunate we are to have the support of the school committee, the support of the town to afford us the devices and the money to, to get that. So on our half, we want to provide that plan to you to ask questions that you may or may not have and see it in progress. So, this most recent, we've done it in three phases. Phase one was Woodland, thousand Chromebooks, grades three to five. This year, we added four grade levels, which was a little over a thousand for grade six through nine. And we had just purchased, they're actually here and getting ready to get all set for September launch. Three more grade levels of Chromebooks will bring us up to, you know, a little over three thousand, grades three to twelve. So, one of the big things that we've talked about throughout this is, one, how we're going to phase everything in, how we're going to roll it up and how we're going to sustain it. And from the first day, we talked about it, is what is the sustainability program? So, as you can see on the first paper, it's a school committee meeting with a date. This just shows we are actually, we purchased a different type of Chromebook. We stayed with the Acer, but the C seven forty, which we, we have now, is being phased out in two years, so we didn't want to invest the money in something that's going to be phased out. What some of you have in front of you, like Chris or Mr. Wilson, you have the new C seven thirty-ones is what the new Chromebooks will be coming in. So those are purchased. We purchased, you know, thousand one hundred and eleven, afforded us also some spares. And this, after much kind of discussion, this is the rollout plan, that the new sixth graders and next year's eleventh and twelfth graders. And that may seem a little scattered, but what allows us to do is create that efficiency over four years. All students who have them this year, which is four grade levels from six to twelve, we're not, Woodlands, stay at Woodland and they don't, don't leave school with the students. They stay in the classroom. So the four grades this year are going to have them back next year and essentially keep them for a five-year cycle and you'll see that through. The reason we went to sixth grade first makes fairly sense to have the new students get the new devices. And then eleventh and twelfth, and again, I've had a lot of questions like, why are you giving the new devices to the seniors and juniors? Well, the purpose is that they can roll back into the middle school over the next three to four years, which will allow Stacy to essentially refresh itself while the new ones are moving their way through the district. Utilizing this plan, as you can see as it goes through, we have a sustained district, you know, digital plan for devices, for the hardware of it, until school year twenty-one, twenty-two. So FY twenty-two is the first time we're going to really be looking at purchasing or leasing, whatever. We don't know what that's going to look like four years from now, but what I wanted to provide tonight is the assurance that we have put a lot of thought into how this is going to be rolled out and rolled up. And that's kind of what this is going into, showing you the different devices and then the years of them. A typical life cycle for the Chromebook Acer C seven forty is five years. And then our goal, starting in twenty-one, twenty-two, so FY twenty-two, is to have all new sixth and ninth graders. That's our refresh program. And again, you do that, you know, I didn't want to go three pages deep, but you do that for three years and then you have another five years sustained program with all the devices moving through. Our, we'll have two pools of spares, our current C seven forties, which our students are really accustomed to and able to fix, because that's what we've been doing. And the new ones hopefully won't have to do a lot of fixing, so this teacher will be able to train the students next year on how to fix any C seven thirty-ones and when there is some breakage.
And you're talking about the tech team, not the individual students?
Yeah, sorry, our, our student tech team that does a lot of the break fix. Just some information on the back, because this is an investment. And this was a big investment by the town and the taxpayers, we really appreciate. So I, I think it's two pages, I was tempted to put it on the back, but I didn't. Just shows that we will be collecting them over the summer. And we have been working with both the high school and middle school principal to create a plan to collect the devices. We used a product called Wasp, which is a scanning, all of our Chromebooks have barcodes, so we scan them all in and, or when the students pick them up at the beginning of the year, scan them. We have the serial number, student's name, and when they come back, we're going to scan them again to make sure they, like a library book or any book with any kind of Scantron, check it out, check it in. The dates have changed multiple times due to snow and school year pushing forward, but this was the dates that we're going to be working with to collect them. Any updates over the summer, we'll take care of those. And then last year, this current school year, as you know, we did not roll out the new devices till third week in September. Our goal is to move it much earlier in the year, because now that we have them in, we have the new ones in-house and creating a summer's worth of plan, Woodland can roll them out very soon, because they're in their schools. And since students already had them for a year, we can start to build that process and we'd like to have them out by the second week of school, if not earlier, for next year. And just the last thing on that page, and again, this may be more than we bargained for tonight, but I wanted you to have this information, that not only are we trying to create efficiency with purchasing hardware, we're trying to create efficiency with learning, application. So the big packet that you had is the stapled packet. What we've also been doing is providing professional development. This just shows you some of the professional development from last summer that we're going to continue this summer into next year. And a PowerPoint kind of printout with this, what we've been doing over this last year is looking at all our instructional tools, our instructional apps, not just the hardware, and trying to create efficiency by having one tool that covers multiple areas. Like, for example, Newsela is one that we've purchased and are moving forward. There's a lot of current events and reading, we're providing that for our, our district. Care Deck is in here, which is an interactive teacher development. Bunsey's another one in there, that's student-led creation. So, not only are we trying to create efficiency with purchasing, efficiency with plans to roll up and roll out, also efficiency, because with efficiency of purchasing instructional apps, it also is efficiency in professional development, so that we can have full day, you know, full staff professional development. So, the other thing, just because I think it was a, a big success last year when we rolled it out this year, was the Hawk Nation Tech Proposal, trying to look at spending money and giving teachers voice. Last year, we had forty-two proposals that we funded, from anywhere from one license to a journalism subscription, to Chromebooks, to iPads, multiple tools that teachers could pilot. And we launched it May seventh, I think the email went out, and it's due by June ninth and we're going to look at those and what fits the criteria of matches our school district goals, matches, you know, any digital safety and citizenship that we need. And it's something that'll enhance learning in our schools and we can, you know, fit in the budget piece. We're going to move forward with that as well, so to give teachers a voice in some of the things that we pilot.
That's it?
Good job.
Questions? We're done here.
Now that we have a full year under our, actually two years, if you include Woodland and that, what are some observations, what are some things that you've learned, some things that maybe we need to work on or?
We as a, as a committee, we as a district, just for, I think, one of the things is transparency. One of the things, we learn something new every day, some things that we like to share and, and some things we work as a team to say, let's ensure for student safety, let's ensure that things are being discussed so that there are no surprises. So I think just continuing that communication, that's something I know for myself, really trying to work on, because I'm like, let's get this done, a task, you know, oriented, and I need to slow down sometimes and ensure that communication coming here with you. I know that I try to update Joe and Jim as much as possible, as the tech chairs on the, on the school committee, and just getting that information out there. I think empowering students as much as we can. I've learned more from students, I got to be honest with you, in the last eighteen months, both how to do some things and what we should avoid. So just empowering them and increasing the teacher and student voice, because this is not a, a Matt Joseph initiative, not a Dr. McNair initiative, this is Milford Public Schools. And this is rooted in education and is rooted in best practices for learning. And to keep that in the forefront, we have to include everybody. I want to be as open as I can. I often meet with individual families who have questions and don't want to have big meetings and also want to be confidential, so we have just discussions and just putting ourselves out there. I think for myself also to be much more efficient in professional development, in meeting with all three principals and creating in a way that we aren't doubling our effort. If we're doing professional development, find a way to train multiple staff members, not just one grade level or one school.
And what about from a more tactical perspective? So, any issues with Chromebooks breaking down, batteries dying, kids forgetting their Chromebooks? Like, is there room for improvement there, anything that we learned?
Yes, all, all around. I think it's almost a double-edged sword in the sense that it's becoming our culture. This is what we have, this is what, it's not a novelty anymore and it's not the new shiny toy. So with that, the breakage, I would say, in the last two months has increased. We are at eight and a half percent, which our goal was to stay under ten. And we have fifteen percent spare, so we are in our, you know, budgeted allotment that we've been really trying to, to work on. So we're looking at tran, you know, transitioning. Half of the breakage we've seen, because we just had a tech meeting, is through excitement. I walk through the halls of Stacy and kids are excited to get out and work in small groups and they drop the, the Chromebooks, you know, sometimes. So, really talking about transitioning, talking about, I know, you know, Mr. Cannon is behind me and we've talked about purchasing some, some things to protect the fifth grade Chromebooks as well, because they're the transition grade in, in Woodland, is just trying to be able to have those discussions. And this is part of what we're doing and part of, part of the curriculum essentially, is the access to the information.
Yeah, and obviously we just completed the budget process for, for this year, but I, I would assume going into next year's budget process, the, the focus is really going to be now on maintaining, because we're going to have Chromebooks for three through twelve, right? So how do we maintain those? And, and more importantly, how do we maintain the, the infrastructure, right? Because I know there are still some open items there and I think last budget season we talked about a network administrator, I don't know if that's still on the table or if that's something that we think we still may, may need moving forward. I know there's been a lot of talk about the, the servers as well and whether or not we move to a cloud-based solution or we buy in-house servers. So I know there's still a lot of decisions that need to be made over the next year in order to be able to support us moving forward.
Yes. So I think as we, as you move from, you know, six hundred teacher devices to first a thousand student devices, to two thousand to thirty-three hundred, one of the positives of using the G Suite is that it's cloud-based storage. So where we're finding the need for, I know, probably fourteen months ago, I sat here and talked about off-site servers and storage, but what we're able to do now, because we have that through Google, is we're able to keep it in-house, because now the only things that we're really looking to host with actual data, because all of our data's in the cloud of Google, is our food service, is Destiny, which is our library software, our SIS software, and that's actually all in-house right now, where Woodland has a server as well. So we're, we're learning as we go along too, because we don't know what that data looks like until the students open it up and see what we need for, for streaming video, what we need for, you know, a robust network with multiple students. We just did our MCAT, or MCAS two point oh for grade, you know, all the grades, we took them online. And this year, we are definitely more conservative and of which grades took them when, just to make sure it was, had the robust network to take the assessments and it was, you know, very smooth. Always room for improvement and we'll just continue to look at that. Kevin Cullen came on about thirteen months ago and really has taken control of the, the network and infrastructure to, to create efficiencies, to work with companies to, one, put the money where we need to, to, to free up spaces. I don't have the exact terminology, but way, the way he's worked it now is that if Woodland needs, you know, sixty percent of our total use, we're able to move around where the one point oh, you know, server we have is used.
Jen, have you else?
Well, first of all, thank you for all the work that you've done and the work that you'll be doing moving forward. So, thinking about everything that you've learned as you've rolled out this year, when, when we look at the high school, is there anything that you'll do differently in terms of professional development to support staff for those who really work with juniors or seniors that haven't maybe seen as much of the Chromebooks in their classrooms to kind of spark excitement, enthusiasm?
Yeah, I think definitely one of the things that I have to get better at and just is highlighting things that are not just over-the-top, exciting and over-the-top, like this is fabulous, everyday lessons. We, you know, through our walkthroughs, we see certain things. There was a lesson I saw, I won't, you know, talk about teachers or students in case that was something they wanted to keep in-house, but a student, a teacher took some famous literature, students read it and then they, what they were able to do is create that same theme in current events like Star Wars or movies now, and then they filmed each other and then they were able to watch each other. So, finding ways to make the technology invisible and then showcase it to other people to get that excitement. I can stand up till I'm blue in the face and rah rah, this is going to be fabulous. But until teachers, I was never a high school teacher, so I don't have the buy-in that a current high school teacher can showcase those lessons and finding way, and I know I work with Mr. Ottlin a lot, to showcase what's happening and how to duplicate that. So that would be the, the step, is how to get that transparency in the learning pieces of it, because sometimes people think that it has to be this over-the-top lesson when it's really just utilizing the Chromebooks for research, then creating a collaborative presentation that, that can be shared with a different class, you know, in a presentation style in the auditorium in the library, however that works.
Right, well, and even when, a simple example I was thinking about is students having to wait until a certain day or period of the day to receive a study guide, whereas it might be a simple thing if teachers get in the habit of, how can I post this? How can I, now that we have these tools and we know that all of our students have the tools, not that they all don't have a phone or something, that they could still access things, but how can we make access to information more readily available than making a kid wait until the next day or seven period to pick up a study guide or something? So I think even little things like that.
Absolutely, really transitioning to what we're doing, make it digital, so that it can be accessible, because students learn differently and we want that for everybody.
Thank you.
Yeah, just to piggyback off, thanks again for your presentation, it was very helpful. To piggyback off of what Jen was saying is, you know, part of, of what the students are kind of learning and utilizing the different tools within the Chromebooks is one of them, kind of like the executive function as far as scheduling, you know, so, you know, to say like homework's being posted up, so they can, you know, access homework assign, or homework assignments, due dates, long-term projects throughout. I was just kind of curious if, if that's something that is being pushed through the technology and is, you know, starting at a younger age and so that way, when they get into twelfth grade and graduating, they kind of, when they go out on their own, they've got an idea of, you know, how to use technology to, you know, access schedules and, and better plan their times.
So again, the, the global answer is yes, but one of the, I know we talked about things to improve, one of my own missteps was saying, this is the way to do it, and really promoting that to teachers. And if it wasn't a match to how the teacher's cadence is for talking, for high school scheduling, I know they have multiple, they could use our current X two system or they could use Google Classroom. My recommendation was using the Google Calendar, because all of our students have the Milford MA domain, but that might have not been a great fit. So my goal for this year is trying to find, meaning the, the year coming up, one or two things that really work well. And then, then we accent and really highlight those, instead of saying, this is the way we're going to do it, because students learn differently. I would definitely like to get some, you know, we talked about efficiency, one or two efficiency strategies for calendar, for homework, so that students have that. I'd love to say three twelve, so that we can start to, to work on it. But we're at such infancy stage in that, we have the capability to do it. We have some teachers who are doing it really well. And our next step is to finding those one or two that we can broaden the scope of it and then start training our staff to do it. Thank you.
So can I, can I just have a friend? Matt, while you're here, we have a few more minutes actually, maybe not. Can you just talk about kind of the data quality campaign that happened this year and what the updates we've done to X two, just really quickly, just so the committee can know this is what we're.
Um, sure.
This is actually a huge undertaking and a big project that is very successful.
So, X two, our Aspen X two is our student information system. And one of the things that we've struggled with, it wasn't one of the big things to come in, one of the big four goals to start, but as we start to bring in more educational tools, we need a consistent, robust student information system. And because we had, we didn't have somebody to really say, let's, let's have a direction, we had multiple people doing multiple roles and jobs in that. And what happens with that is sometimes we double our efforts and we create avenues and we, we aren't consistent. So when we're looking for data, sometimes for just a very easy example, is when you put in, you know, what's Tim Kernan in our system? He's principal, he's also principal for some reason, someone put an S on it. He's school administrator and he's administrator. So he has four roles or had four roles in our system. So if we did a data, you know, pulling out our data and we did school administrator and he wasn't on that, he was on principal, we wouldn't know Tim's a principal and, you know, besides all the great work he's doing, of course we'd know that. But that goes for students as well, that we, we weren't consistent in the way that we were cataloging our data. So, one of the things really, going all the way back to September and had a real big meeting in Dr. McNair's office and then just much more one-on-one meetings, is say, we wanted to almost start fresh, to say, this is what it should look like and build it that way. Jen, or Janie, who I also know is here, has really been working a lot with our EL data, which also wasn't consistent, it was accurate, it just wasn't consistent to ensure that we could pull reports and do different things. So this year, we've really worked to create efficiency in our roles, create efficiency with our data, because some of the software we're bringing in now, it's incredibly important to have that data consistent. I know you said it was, it was success, I think, depending on who you ask and what date you ask them, it would range in the level of success, because we are trying to create consistency and doing things different sometimes creates stress. But one thing I can do different for next year, we're trying to work with Aspen X two to get professional development, so that we are doing things right. One of my big pushes in this, besides efficiency, is we're creating, you know, tasks for roles, not for people. Because one of the things I've learned in, in being in Milford, we are all looking to help each other. We all want to do the best for each other and sometimes doing that, actually, say someone is helping, you know, I'm helping Jim with something and then I leave and then now it's this new person who comes in has to do that and they're not really accustomed to doing that. So trying to create, what are the roles of the building principals? What are the roles of guidance at the high school, what are the roles of the admin assistants? So that we can start next year, the September of, you know, FY nineteen, with consistent roles for our student information and our accurate data. There's been bumps in the road, but I have to say, Aspen's worked very closely with us. Even when I leave here, I have ten emails to respond to to fix a couple of things that I didn't know that we needed to, so. So it's been a full-year process, there's a lot of people involved in helping out. But what it's gonna allow us to do, back to where I started with efficiency, with roll up and roll out, is efficiency in our student information in reports.
And one thing, if I can just add, Joe, is that, you know, I give Jen and Matt a ton of credit, because like, this is not exciting work. It's going like line by line and making corrections, making sure that the dropdown menus are accurate and consistent. So all the data kind of matches. The principal example was a good example, but there's probably a hundred or a hundred and fifty examples across the district where the same thing was being entered three different ways. And, you know, depending on what you entered as part of your query, would depend on the accuracy of the data that you received. I lost my train, oh, we were one of the early adopters of the X two Aspen system. And we, a lot of us who've been in education administrators for a while remember going to this guy's basement in St. Louis, is where this thing started, and I might be making that up. And now it's like owned by Folad, which is a major, you know, international company. And a lot of the early adopted districts created a lot of individualized things that kind of worked for the district. But as the system and the network kind of grew, a lot of like the stuff that districts like Milford, who were early adopters in Massachusetts, and there's probably forty or fifty districts in Massachusetts, that were in the same boat, all had the same problems with the data quality, because the whole, the whole, the whole system kind of shifted. And so I give Jen, Matt, and the whole team a lot of credit, because it was a difficult, difficult job. And wildly, wildly popular with the people who do a lot of the data entry. We had our own way of doing things, and we had to get everybody on the same page. So I want to thank the both of you while you're here publicly tonight. Because I think it's, it was a big job, it was a great job, it took a lot of work, a lot of hours by a lot of people.
And I just want to say one thing too, I mean, with the emails that you send out and I read, depending on how big and long they are, I'll read most of them, but the vast information that you give out and the programs that you're rolling out with these teachers and students and in almost thirty-three hundred dollar Chromebooks, I mean, thirty-three hundred Chromebooks that we've rolled out, I haven't heard many issues. So it seems like we're doing something right, and these kids are gonna get a better learning experience and the teachers are just gonna get better and better as well, so I applaud, thank you very much. Jim?
Well, one thing that you made me think about with the talk about data was when we were in budget season, we were talking about the need for possibly some additional either network administrators or data managers. So I think when we start talking about our ongoing meetings with the finance committee, this is a great example of a lot of heavy lifting that has to be done. And everybody who's looking on this is not working on something else. So I think it's just, maybe if we're, at some point, you're probably already doing this, but keeping a running list of the things that we've been talking about all year, this is a great example. And some of, I think the coding ties into funding and different grants and things.
Absolutely.
So it's really critical that it's done correctly and consistently, so.
In any large-scale organization, there's, nobody has a hundred percent data accuracy.
Right.
But that's always the goal.
Right.
And I think we're gonna start the school year out next year with the closest we've ever been to administering Milford public schools.
Yeah, I think that, I think it's awesome, and I think we should just keep an eye on, is that an area where we need more, more human support to get it entered and maintained?
Jim, did you have a question?
Just quickly, I was gonna add, I mean, obviously, Matt, this is such a huge undertaking, not only heavy lift by your group, but I think every teacher and administrator that was involved in the rollout, so everyone should be commended. It's also part of a larger IT plan, is that something you'll come back to talk more about later?
Yes.
Okay. I think to some of Joe's questions and some of the stuff we're talking about now, I'd love to hear about access and how we monitor, like, it's part of a bigger comprehensive plan, I believe, because you shared with me the old plan, I think it ends in twenty nineteen.
I did, yeah, so I think when we, at the end of probably twelve months from now, coming back and sharing, this is where we started, this is where we've come, and this is where we're going. And that's something I want to be a part of next year and beyond, because I think it's been amazing to see it and to see where we're going. And the next phase of it will, I'm hoping that we don't talk about the Chromebooks and we don't talk about some of the hardware and networking, we're just talking about how it's enhancing learning and how we're utilizing professional development to create and allow students creation, student voice, because that's where we're going. That's gonna be the main point of the next phase of plan, is looking at student creation, student voice, and have utilizing online portfolios a little bit more, utilizing ongoing portfolios from three to twelve. You know, those are, a year from now, conversation, but that's where we're going.
And just maybe food for thought, certainly we don't need the baked plan, but the budget season is before next May, so to the extent we could get the ball rolling on a couple of topics, maybe we do a mid-year check-in that we could leverage for that.
That works for me.
Okay, thanks.
So I know you probably have like nanoseconds left, so maybe just real quick. So pivoting off of what Matt said, just can we just go back for one second to IT requirements? So like on-prem versus off-prem and migration to the cloud, et cetera. So talking about budget season, where are we at for capacity? Like, I know you're, we're looking at migration to the cloud, but you also talked about on-prem requirements. Do we have bandwidth? What are we gonna look like in the next few quarters in terms of like expansion? As you roll out more curriculum-based initiatives that are technology-driven, are we gonna need more internal bandwidth associated with that? So should we be budgeting for that moving forward?
Um, yes, I've had, you know, early conversations with Kathy Parrish, she's not here tonight, but looking at some available dollars to bring something in next year.
Okay.
Not only looking at the on-prem storage and, you know, data piece, looking at increasing and working with Comcast, our bandwidth here, because we're gonna add, you know, we're gonna triple our usage in three years or two years from when, you know, when I started. And we haven't really increased this, the capacity three times. But this year, we've never reached over sixty-three percent usage. So we're feeling, if, you know, I don't have those numbers in front of me, but doing the math, will be upwards in the eighty, eighty-eight to ninety-two percent. And I feel like launching the year and getting into the mid-year, we're gonna be okay. But that's gonna be part of the next budget conversation, is moving from, you know, one point oh to one point five.
So it's like, that's on your technology roadmap, right?
Yeah.
So that's, that's how it's gonna be part of the conversations.
It will be, that'll be part of the mid-year check-in.
Thank you.
Joe?
Just one more, one more question, you know, we're going way over here, but...
That's my, that's my fault.
Take your time, take your time. The other request next is gonna be coming to give us an update. And I know you talked about professional development and you talked about transparency earlier. I think the other area that we need to focus on, and you've talked about this in the past, is how do we educate parents on the technology and on the Google platform? And how do we give them transparency into what's happening in the classroom, right? Because this is all new to parents as well. In the past, they could sit down with their child and they could open up the textbook and they can go through the homework. And now it's not as easy to do that. And I know we talked, when we talked about it in the past, that the Google platform is very robust, and we're just scratching the surface right now, so as you pointed out, we're learning as we go. But my understanding is that there's also a sort of a parent portal to that Google classroom that we could potentially explore.
There is a piece of that, and that's gonna be part of the plan next year as well. I wanted a full year under our belt to, when we talk to parents, have more of concrete explanation versus like, it could be this or it could be that. Early this year, we're actually having a parent forum. Notices are gonna be going out very soon on June eleventh and evening, and June twelfth during the day. Just gather feedback, come see me and our team, gather feedback how this year went, and really talk to our new, essentially incoming fifth graders and sitting tenth and eleventh graders, what it's gonna look like going forward for next year. And that's something I hope that I can continue next year multiple times of the year.
There we go.
Right side of the room.
Incredible that we have this one-to-one initiative with over thirty-three hundred computers for our students, it's wonderful. I was curious about the digital citizenship and the safety piece. How do we, how is that working? Is that done, you know, by grade level or just a brief overview?
Well, right now, we don't have anything concrete in place. I was actually, you know, funny you bring it up, I was meeting with Common Sense Media today and talking about having something more consistent. Right now, we're just really trying to educate our students. We use, you know, we call it SMART, Be Smart Online, because I'm not, you know, as a principal, when I was a principal or now, not about rules in the sense of, don't do this, don't do that, it's talking about expectations. So we want our students, the expectation is to be smart online. When you're utilizing the online platform, is it safe? Is it meaningful? You know, and we go through, I can send that to you, is it respectful? And A is losing train of thought, right, we're talking to you, but it, and T is think. You know, we gotta think of what we're doing, and, oh, A is appropriate. And just assuring our students, does that always work? No, and when it doesn't, we have things in place to monitor language, content, photos, things that are not appropriate on our network. And we're utilizing two tools, and I've talked about it a lot, and I know I don't have time now to get into it, something if you want to learn more about as a new, the three new school committee members have to do that. We use Gaggle and GoGuardian, which GoGuardian monitors the device, Gaggle monitors drive. And to ensure that, because we also, email is available to our students within the Milford MA domain. So nothing concrete for digital citizenship, but it's something that's, I'm really trying to find something that works. There wasn't something when we rolled this out. That would have been one more thing, not that it's not important to have that, but I didn't want to layer that on to, here's a device, here's an account for your kids, here's this, and now teach a digital citizenship. I met with all students who received Chromebooks first, you know, week before they even received them, and we talked about a lot of this and just working with the building principals to keep that focus in the lessons that they're teaching, that the teachers are teaching.
And we see, and Matt says this all the time, but I'm gonna just jump in. Like, your online behavior, we treat the same as your classroom behavior. And so we really have the same expectation of how are you interacting with your peers, your teachers, anybody online, the same expectations that we have in the classroom. And we emphasize that throughout the district.
Great, thank you.
Anybody else? Awesome, thank you, I'm Jeff.
You're welcome.
Next on the agenda is superintendent reappointment to Bye County Collaborative Board. Annually, members of the Milford School Committee are asked to vote on the superintendent's reappointment to the Bye County Collaborative Board of Directors. And tonight's vote would be for Dr. Beckhendite to serve again on the Board of, Bye County Board of two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen. Can you say anything, or is everybody familiar with the, with the Bye County Collaborative is? Do you want a brief explanation? I'll give a brief explanation.
Every school district in Massachusetts has the opportunity to be a part of us. Basically, what a collaborative provides services predominantly for students with special needs, but they also provide professional development and a few other services as well. We, our, our group is the Bye County Collaborative. I've sat on the board for the last two years, it's a requirement of, to either have a superintendent or a school committee member serve on the board. And we have a number of students at Bye County that were receiving services, educational services, and we use them on occasion for professional development. The reason we belong to a collaborative is it provides a better price structure for the services we receive. So if a student is going to be placed out of district because their needs cannot be met in Milford Public Schools, there's a number of options. The collaborative has a number of programs that we have, that are the kind of common reasons why students are placed out of district. And we've taken advantage of those, and we've, it's significantly less expensive, but also a high quality of service. And there's a number of, the surrounding districts are involved in the collaborative as well. And it's been a longstanding, ongoing relationship. I think very highly of the Bye County Collaborative program, the director, Dr. Gruber, and they do a really nice job.
Thank you, Kevin. Can I get a motion to have Kevin do this again? Motion by Jim, second by Joe, all in favor? Awesome, thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen Family Handbook and School Improvement for Shining Star and Woodland. Good evening, doctor, how are you?
Good evening, how are you?
Good, thank you.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you for coming.
Joining me is Sarah Homestin, the coordinator for Milford Family Community Network. She's the co-chair of our school council.
Thank you.
So would you like me to do the handbook first?
Sure.
Okay. So there is just a couple of changes to the handbook. On page five, there's an updated staff list. On page seven, there's an updated session times based on a family survey that was distributed to families. We added a second offering for our three-year-olds. And we added a, another day to our morning session. So it's, we have two, five morning sessions now. And on page eighteen, we added a statement to our standards of behavior to remain in compliance with NAEYC accreditation. Would you like me to read the updated statement? No, you're good. Thanks anyway.
I want to hear it.
So that's, that's, those are the changes for the handbook. So the school improvement plan, you can see that the format changed. So that's the biggest, one of the biggest changes with the improvement plan. So we talked a lot about this at our school council. When we looked at our handbook in relation to the other, I'm not our handbook, our school improvement plan in relation to the other schools, and we found that a lot of our things in our school improvement plan were checklists, day-to-day maintenance things that we could take care of. And it wasn't really a true school improvement plan. So we liked the format that Tim had suggested, so we embraced that format. So to explain the school improvement plan that you have in front of you, that was from last year, if you can see that there are three different text colors, there's green, blue, and red. So the text that was in green were areas that we had accomplished. And the blue were areas that we were currently working on, and the text in red were new initiatives. So that was the twenty seventeen, eighteen one. You should now only have in that school improvement plan areas that are green and a couple of red. Because we pretty much accomplished everything that was in there.
Does anybody, I don't mean to interrupt you, but does anybody, I'm not colorblind, but I'm not seeing colors.
I don't think we got that one part, because we just got the card yesterday. We just follow Melissa, I'm sure you saw it, okay?
Share, pass, turn of...
That's fine, I just wanted to make sure we're on the same, because I think everyone was looking around what was going on, so.
Kevin. So every, it was, like I said, it was more like a checklist. There was, the things that were in there were important, but you'll see in this year's, this year's school improvement plan, there are definitely areas that are measurable and we'll be able to track growth with that. So everybody has the proposed new one, right? Okay, that's not color-coded, it's black and white. Okay. So we have, like I said, our format was changed and we have four goals, and we aligned our four goals with the district strategic plan, just as the other schools have. Would you like me to go through each goal?
Sure, please.
Okay, so goal number one, our focus area is growth-focused instruction. And we have curriculum development, instructional technology, and we have assessment in there. For goal one A, our teachers will continue to update curriculum maps and develop curriculum units within the UBD format. And the teachers will investigate project-based learning, the project approach down at the preschool, and see how we can merge more project-based learning activities into our curriculum. One B is increase access to instructional technology at Shining Star, specifically mounting overhead projectors. We have the projectors, they're just not mounted, and some classrooms are missing whiteboards. So that just requires budget, budget planning. I've been in contact with Matt, and we have a spreadsheet that we're trying to work with. So that should, the timeline for that is twenty eighteen, twenty, so that will continue for two years. One C is, is a bit of a change. So the teachers noticed that when, monthly, when the teachers meet during curriculum planning and when we have new students coming in for evaluations from early intervention, it's hard to gauge students' strengths and weaknesses, especially when they're three years old during one setting. So we had long discussions about how we could implement things to make sure that we could get a better picture of the students as a whole. And one of the things that came up was that we needed to have a stronger assessment for entrance in, for evaluating students for special education services. So we want to continue to use our Brigant inventory, our screening inventory, when we have our screening days. And we want to use the DACE, it's a developmental, the developmental assessment of young children for initial special education evaluations. It's a pro, it's an assessment that was already being used at the preschool by our OT and PT teachers. And there is a cognitive portion to it, and there's a speech portion to it. So we want to move into, one of our other goals is to move into an arena-style testing, and it just makes sense for everybody to have the same instrument. So that's one C. Oh, and one D flows nicely into that, that is the, that's the arena testing. So that's where we were, we were having conversations about having kids come in more often to get a better picture of them. So we want to, we're still trying to, we're still working... So, we want to, we're, we're still trying to, we're still working out the format of it now, we're gonna, we're, the rest of this year, and when we come back at the, at the beginning of the year, our professional development will be devoted to the arena-style testing. We want to have students come in for either a week-long, maybe two weeks, so we're able to get a stronger picture of them. So, that's what goal one D is all about. It's called the arena-style testing. Okay, so, goal two, eh, the focus area is equity and access, and these focus on professional development and early childhood readiness committee. And the professional development that we want to focus on would be ongoing, and we want to focus on helping teachers asking rich questions to the preschool students to extend their thinking. We want to bring in an outside agency. I met so, some fabulous women at the NAEYC conference last year, and they wrote a great book that we shared downstairs, and it's definitely something that the, the teachers could benefit from. And she would be willing to come and do a, a training for a large audience, so possibly the kindergarten teachers would be able to partake in that too. And goal two B is to reinstate and increase the meeting times for the early childhood school readiness committee. We met twice this year, and we see that it's a definite need, not only just for Shining Star, but for all of the, the preschools in Milford. So, we want to reinstate that committee and get everybody back together and have some really great conversations about school readiness, so all of the kids are prepared when they move into kindergarten. Goal three, the focus area is social-emotional learning and equity and access, and it is, the goal title is family engagement. And we want to continue to welcome families and improve our ongoing intentional, meaningful engagement with families. We want to continue to collaborate with Sarah's group and initiate workshops for families on a variety of early childhood topics, at night, during the day. We wouldn't be able to do that, but Sarah's group takes care of that, but we'd like to partner more with Sarah and do some, some workshops for families at night. And we want to increase our family events at school. So, we had an, an invention convention this year, and we have a family picnic this year. We have lots of great ideas that are, that are bouncing around downstairs, but we, we definitely want to increase more family time. And then the fourth goal is, the focus area is continuous learning and social-emotional learning, and we want to implement student success data teams. So, down at the preschool, our schedule is different than a lot of the, than the other elementary schools. They have, they have time in their day for the teachers to get together and have discussions. They're usually do, TCT time, I don't know what it, it's called.
Teacher collaboration time.
Yes. So, different, different names, but we don't really have that down at the preschool. So, we were trying to figure out what's the best way to have those conversations about students. And we figured that the student success data teams would be a great way to look at the project-based learning that we want to bring in, look at the new assessment that we want to bring in, and look at the arena testing, and kind of collect the data on that and see the growth, and see where we need to, the, the changes we need to make in order to make sure that the students are successful and prepared for kindergarten. And then, of course, we want to provide a safe learning environment.
So, before the committee jumps in, can you talk about just some of the things you're doing around, like, performance-based assessment, and how you're kind of maybe thinking about jumping into the MCIA partnership that we talked about, and how that tied into the invention convention?
Yes. So, the, the teachers are actually now, they're already doing project-based learning. They just didn't know that that's what it was called, project-based learning. So, it's really a great, multidisciplinary, just effective way of making sure that preschool students are getting the most developmentally appropriate education that they need in order to succeed when they go to kindergarten. So, we had conversations about the, the invention convention that they had. They, last year, they just had it in their classroom, and I was like, you guys, this is great. You need to have the families come in and, and see all of these great things that you're doing. They, they, the classes were, they had one box, and they, it was a whole week, two weeks, three weeks long of activities where the kids created KWL charts, and they brainstormed what they could make with that box, and they, the, the final products, there were robots, there was a giant mint chocolate chip cupcake with strawberry frosting. There was a couple of race cars, there were castles. They were unbelievable, and the teachers were really excited about it. And it, it's hard when you, it's hard to get people to change sometimes, but they were already engaged in the activity, and they saw the success in the activity, and they were like, oh, this is really great. This is, this project-based learning is, is really great. So, we do need professional development on it. I don't want to make it seem like, oh, yeah, we're all set, we're ready to go. We definitely need professional development on it, but there's a willingness and an eagerness to continue with that type of approach downstairs. So, we're looking forward to doing that next year.
But I loved it because it was engaging, standards-based, and it really developed, like, literacy skills. It was kind of a design challenge, and in some cases, it brought in mathematics. So, it brought in a lot of things together. And it's, she's really oversimplifying the, the process, but it was, it was fantastic on a lot of different levels academically, and the kids were unbelievably engaged. They're always engaged at the preschool. The happiest place in the district. I'll say that when Tim comes up too.
Yes, that's all true. Yes, yes. The kids really, really liked it. So, the teacher, and the teachers are really looking forward to, to implementing more, more activities like that. And we did have conversations about how you are able to meet all of the standards when you take on more of a project-based learning approach. So, you know, some people may consider it to be thematic teaching. It's a little bit, it's a lot more than thematic, thematic teaching. So, next year will be a work in progress. We want to look at, we do have Houghton Mifflin downstairs. We do have everyday math. We have Foss Science Kids. So, we really want to take a real hard look at the, the curriculum that we have downstairs and make sure that that, those are the, the elements that we want to put in our curriculum maps and our, and in our UBD formats. So, that'll be a work in progress next year, but we're looking forward to that.
I'll open it up. Does anyone have any questions or comments?
I love Cory, how thoughtful the overall approach is, and how you've kind of taken it to the next level. I think that's fantastic. I had one question, and then just two comments. In regards to the screening change, what do you anticipate that's going to yield in terms of results? What would you expect to see?
So, the screening tool that we're using is norm referenced, and that was the biggest, that was the biggest area that was lacking. So, we wanted to make sure that we had a norm reference test, and it was a tool that was familiar to the teachers downstairs. I didn't want to come in and say, oh, we're using this tool. If people were already, there were already people in the team that were using it. So, it just made sense to use that, but the biggest thing is that it is norm referenced, so we'll be able to get that information.
Got it. Okay, thank you. And then in terms of the evaluation part, the professional development piece, which I think is fantastic, just a thought, maybe you add also, like, an evaluation component, where then you go in and observe some of that happening to kind of en- ensure that you're kind of seeing it throughout, just a second component of the goal, to kind of see it live throughout the year. It's just a thought that I had. And then in regards to the school readiness, which I think is fantastic, maybe there's a way to team up a bit with our marketing subcommittee, because that seems like it would be a really great, that's the introduction for families to our schools, and the more we can promote Shining Star and get those kids in early, I think that would be fantastic to help address some of our school choice challenges.
That would be great, and, and also to promote Sarah's group. We really, Sarah's group has such great programs, and a lot of our families take part in the classes and the workshops that she provides. So, it, it's, it's great to, I, I want to make sure that Sarah's group gets the recognition that they deserve.
And you see that, Sarah, honestly, all the time on Facebook, when someone moves to Milford, and people say, where do I go? And everyone's always Family Network, Family, so I think it's out there, and the more we can promote it, the better.
And the more as I look, um, we have several members.
Absolutely.
Who are members of the Family Network on school committee now, so, yeah.
That's fantastic.
Yes.
Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you, Cory.
You're welcome.
Joe, just want to piggyback on a couple of comments that Meg made, and so, from a professional development perspective, and I don't know if this question's directed to you, Cory, or, or to Craig, but, um, the new coaching positions that we're rolling out, are those K through five, or are those pre-K as well?
I'm hoping to get them pre-K also, and I don't want to spread two people way too thin though, which is kind of what I worry about. But it seems like they have a great entry point with some of the initiatives that Cory's pushing anyways, so, hopefully.
And as that expand, as that team expands, it, it might be able to provide more support.
You know, eventually, I'd like, I'd like to see it successful and have at least one coaching position in every single building. But we'll start with our two, and we'll get there.
Yeah.
I do have two teachers that are interested in that group that you had mentioned before.
Yep.
So, that, in there, it's, it's teachers that are not going to, you usually find that there's the same set of teachers that like to participate and volunteer their time. It, these are two sep, these are two individuals that, that, that don't use, that don't do that, so. Not that they don't volunteer their time, they're just not like, are CTLs.
Can we get their names, Cory?
No, it's, they're not CTLs, they're not known faces, so. That's not too bad, but you, you know what I'm saying.
Yeah.
It's really good.
And the, the other question, obviously, we want to increase enrollment, but I know space has been an issue for a couple of years there, so how are we doing from a space perspective?
So, space has not been an issue for us. I think for the high school, it has been an issue, but Shining Star, we have plenty of space. We've, we have, we have everything that we needed and actually a little more. We have a classroom this year that we're not utilizing because we had a maternity leave position that we didn't fill. Our current enrollment is one seventy-five, and our projected enrollment for next year is two hundred and five. We have seven classroom teachers right now, one on maternity, total staff of forty-two. Next year, we'll have eight classroom teachers and a total staff of forty-three. But we, we are certainly not busting at the seams. Our classrooms are large. We have plenty of room. We have two playgrounds. Yeah, we, space is not an issue for us. I think the high school would like our space, but it's, we don't have an issue with space downstairs.
Josh keeps coming down there measuring classrooms, which seems a little threatening.
Yeah, no, we're, we're, we have, we are, we're good.
Okay.
And it's nice to see that our, our numbers are increasing.
Yeah.
First, thank you, first off, for all the work you did to put this together. I was just intrigued by the idea of what you call the arena testing.
Yes.
Is that meant more for students who don't currently attend Shining Star, and they're coming in for testing to make it easier for them, or?
Yes.
What's the intent of that?
The intent is, so, right now, we have some, our three-year-olds that are coming in for evaluations, and it's usually spread out for an hour here, an hour there, depends on what area they're getting tested in. But we're not getting a true picture of how they interact with their peers.
Right.
It's hard to gauge and test on certain areas that are fundamental in kindergarten, in preschool, when they're coming in just for an hour. So, the arena-style testing will, will afford that child the opportunity to come in, let's just say it's a week. We're still trying to, to work out the, the dynamics of it. So, let's say the child comes in for a week, the parent will drop the student off. They would more than likely come during our morning session, because that's when our, the three-year-olds are successful, is at, in our morning sessions. So, we'll have them come in the morning session, and our morning session is from eight forty-five till eleven fifteen. They may stay the whole day, they may not stay the whole, the whole day. We, we still have to work on that, but it's a time for the students to come in and interact with peers, and then the team comes in and observes the child while they're working. So, they would still be pulled out and work individually to gauge individual skills, but that social piece is real important at preschool, in their interactions, so the arena-style testing is really the way to go.
Yeah, I, I'd not heard of that, and I, I completely agree with you, and I think it's so difficult to make a determination with a preschooler if you're going to label that there is a disability without having that authentic opportunity to assess their interaction. So, I think that sounds a big, great rule. And my other question just was in terms of kind of what Megan was talking about, the readiness committee. For the members of that group, like, does it include somebody like Jen, someone who's got an EL background, who supports different?
I think Jen's on a readiness committee, but you're more than involved.
Jen wants to be on another committee.
Sarah, do you want to speak to the readiness committee?
Or we're designated.
This is the last time she'll show up to speak.
Craig's on it.
Are you, were you, were you on it too?
Yes.
Jen's on it. Sorry, Jen. Jen's on it.
Well, it's just, it actually, we did have a very strong school readiness committee back when we had full-day K. It was part of receiving funding for full-day K. And the committee was made up of early education and care providers in the community, kindergarten teachers, preschool teachers, administrators here, myself, and some parents. And really, what they talked about is what does school readiness mean to Milford Public Schools? And then we made it broader, what does it mean to the town of Milford? And it was a venue for, for example, Mother Hubbard, Rise and Shine Academy, for teachers, for them to be talking with the teachers in Milford to find out what curriculums are everybody using. So, to backtrack, most licensed daycares and centers have to use the same curriculum that Shining Star is using, it's with the mass standards. So, it's all tied in. They're accredited. They have to be licensed and meet certain standards. So, there were some crossovers and some screenings that they were being used, some curriculums. So, everybody was kind of talking about what they're using and how can we prepare our kids to enter kindergarten, maybe at the same level, or the teachers to know what was going on. A big piece that came out of the school readiness committee as well was when we would speak with the preschool teachers, and the kindergarten teachers would have a chance to speak with one another, and they would say, okay, this year's class, when we look at them as a whole, this is what we feel they needed additional support around. The kindergarten teachers would say, well, the kids, preschool teachers would say, the kids came in this year, they can't sit at tables. They're having, they can't do self-care, they can't wash their hands. A lot of them didn't recognize their name in print. It was things like that. So, it was a good discussion to be able to say, okay, so at a pre-K level, what do we need to work on? And we even talked about our EL students and what everybody does at their sites for the EL students as well. So, it helped to kind of have a game plan and really look at Milford as a town, not just the school system, because eventually, they all end up here. Then we talked about different ways of introducing to the Milford Public Schools. The school readiness came up with a lot of the activities that you see with Welcome to Kindergarten Night, Move-Up Day, the Ice Dream Social at night, you know, all of those things were birthed out of that, that group. And then Craig had an idea to kind of bring it back to life around early literacy and, and getting kids, you know, so we talked about all those type of, um, topics. So, Cory and I have been working on recruiting parents, bringing back, you know, all the daycare providers, just putting an open invitation out to them, so we can all talk about what we're seeing as a whole in our town, you know, what, what is happening, and what are going to be some of the needs coming into kindergarten, or coming in, some kids who don't have any preschool experience, and then some kids who do have special needs and do come to our integrated preschool. So, what a parent's needs, what a children's needs, you know, what are we doing really well? We also talked about that a lot of times. But it's important to get everybody talking. So, that's basically, it's open to anybody who really wants to, I mean, has a vested interest in, you know, early education in, in doing these things for children, but, you know, we've talked about assessments, you know, we've talked about curriculum and how everybody ties it in, sharing some resources, professional development opportunities.
Yeah, I mean, I think all the research shows that the earlier we start with children, the more successful they have the potential to be. And, you know, when I look at our town, or we all look at it, the changing demographics, the changing socioeconomic kind of grades in our town, and the changing cultures that we have coming in, I think all those things are so important to help them, you know. And even working at a school, you see kids coming in that haven't touched a pair of scissors.
Oh, yes.
They just never, like, to your point about not knowing how to sit at a table.
Or take direction from another adult.
Right.
And, you know, what I love about Cory's idea about the arena testing too, is if a child's having a bad morning or a bad day, and that one test is going to define, or that one testing period is going to define the placement or what, that's, you know, so this, I guess our program is a precursor to be able to see, like, really observe the children, because we see a lot of them too on a weekly basis. And, you know, through the course of the year. So, sometimes, you know, when I've talked to Cory about you're having so-and-so coming up, I think you, you've observed this, and this has happened. So, we do work a lot with our EL families. Jen has been supportive to our program. We're doing some of these things. And being able to have Cory to bounce things off of and say, okay, this is what we're looking for, like, the next step. This is what we see is coming up to Milford Public Schools now.
No, I, that's great. Thank you so much for that. Great, no, I, that's great, thank you so much for that.
Joe?
So, ju- ju- just at that point, do we track what percentage of incoming kindergarten students, um, didn't attend preschool?
Yeah.
We, we do, we have that data.
Do we do? And are we seeing that number trending upward with the increase in economically disadvantaged students in the community, or?
I don't, I can't s- say speci- I don't have the, that data in front of me, but I can get that for you. But I can tell you that there is, um, becoming more and more of a need and an interest in, um, full-day pre-K. Um, we are, we have, I think, two spots left in the preschool, um, and we can't, we can't fill anymore after that, um, and people are still calling. Um, there's a definite need and a want from the families.
And this is probably the earliest we've almost completely filled out, I would say, too.
Hmm.
Well, y- yes, and I think it has a lot to do with, um, the surveys that were sent out, um, the outreach, um, and the requests and asking families, what do you want? What, it doesn't make any sense to offer a two-full-day session if families don't want a two-full-day session. Um, so, the, most of the, um, results that I received back from the survey were full day, um, and, um, five mornings and five afternoons. We have, generally, we only have one, we've had only one five-day afternoon class, we have two now and they're both full.
Then, Joe, just to address your question too, um, Cory and I participated in a pilot program just looking at that topic specifically about,
Mm-hmm.
um, cause the state's looking at it so heavenly, heavily, um, what percentage in your district has not had a preschool experience? So, that's s- support universal pre-K. Um, and so, you know, we, we worked on that, that was one of the questionnaires, we had people fill out in kindergarten, uh, registration, um, we're talking with that. So, the state's is definitely looking at that and, um.
We have that data right downstairs.
Yeah.
Good.
Email away.
And, and do you know where the state is with, with that?
Yeah.
Topic, are, are they close to making a decision on that, or are they still?
Oh. Well, kindergarten is still not mandatory.
Yeah.
So, I think, you know, there's just such a huge price tag associated with universal pre-K and, um, you know, is it just for at-risk children? Or is it gonna be the word universal available for everybody, um?
Yeah, there's, there's, if I could jump in, there's, there's a lot of issues, I think there's a, there's a, there was a big push about two years ago at the federal level for universal preschool, or pre-K. Um, Boston, I think, has dipped their toes in that water, I, and I don't think, I don't know if it's universal yet, but I think they're going in that direction. Um, but I think we're, there's a lot of, there's a lot of issues connected to it because it's just a capacity issue. Um, if we were to bring, you know, we have roughly three hundred kids in a class, sometimes a little bit more than that, um, all at the same time
Right.
in, like every community in Massachusetts, we have a very difficult time finding a place to put them. And that's one of the things that I think it's got, it's probably a few years off because there's gotta be, I think, some building and some infrastructure connected to, like, getting kids physically through the doors and having like a place where they can safely, like, have classes and, you know, enjoy recess and all the other things that go along with preschool, like that. Hey, anybody else have a question? No? Alright, so we do have to vote, um, I move to vote that we accept the Shining Star Early Childhood Center, um, School Improvement and Family Handbook. There's a motion from, motion of Chris, seconded by Laura, all of you. Thank you guys, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good job.
This is Tim Keon and the principal of the happiest place in the Milford Public Schools.
So, thank you all for having me, I'm bringing Jen, Jenian up, my, uh, school council chair, co-chair couldn't be bothered to show up tonight. Kidding. I got a hamburger right across the table there. So.
Better fill in, Tim.
Yeah. So, uh, if, if the chair would allow, uh, before I start tonight, I'd like to, um, share a positive today and, um, just a, a little public recognition.
Go for it.
If that's alright, so, the positive today, um, just probably the, the best news that I think anyone in the community had today was Lisa Kincaid returned to school for, for a full day today.
Well done, that's great.
So, that was awesome, uh, the kids were elated, um, the teachers were elated and, um, you know, she's a rock star in, in town, so. Um, it was wonderful to have her, uh, in the building for the full day. She walked in and before she even took her coat off, I'm like, here's what you're doing today.
Here you go.
Yeah, here you go. So, she was on the floor helping with M-CAS, she was in the cafeteria with lunch duty and recess duty, she was visiting with kids and it was just, it was awesome. It was really awesome, so, that was great news. Uh, and then the, the flip side of that, public recognition, I wanna take this chance to, um, just recognize, uh, Andy Anderson, who has filled in for Lisa, uh, throughout this year, so. Um, Andy, uh, is a staple and a fixture in Milford, he was the principal for several of us in this room right now, um. And Andy, uh, stepped in when, when we knew that Lisa was gonna be out, um, without much expectation, um, just, we were just looking for some help and some, you know, somebody who was reliable and A- Andy has exceeded those expectations, um, you know, tenfold. He's been absolutely amazing this year, um, he has not missed a day of work, um, he asked me for permission if he has to leave five minutes early, I'm like, Andy, just tell me, you're doing me a favor. You're here, uh, you know, and, and he has been, um, just absolutely amazing, he's, he's, um, from the moment he gets in till the moment he leaves, it is just, he is at, you know, a hundred miles an hour with kids, with teachers, on the phone. Um, you know, he's, he's, he recognizes kids and he's like, I had your grandmother in school. Andy would kill me for saying that, but he does. And, and he's just, and he's, he's just been amazing and, um, so Andy has, uh.
Right, I'm gonna need that clip.
Yeah. Andy has been absolutely amazing and I, I wanna take this chance today to, uh, just recognize him publicly to the community and I, I, you know, you know, many people love Andy and rightfully so. And he has just been a savior for Woodland this year, so we really appreciate Andy's work, so, thank you for, um, the few minutes there.
Awesome. Um, be- before you start though, can I, can I, um, please, you're like in year two now, so can you give us an update before we tackle this awesome project that you're gonna have in front of us?
Yeah.
Can you give us like, year one and then year two type thing, I'm sure.
Yeah, it's, it's only through year two that I can, I can look back and say how crazy year one was.
Right, right.
I knew it at the time, but it's only now, I mean, your second year in any position and any role, I think, is always a little bit better and a little bit easier. Um, but, uh, you know, looking back on all the things that we had, all the changes and newness from just personnel and building relationships and building culture to logistics and, um, just getting everybody up to speed and bringing a new grade in and, um, we can look back and say, that was insane. Um, so this year has been, this year has been a great year, it's really been a fabulous year and, you know, it's, um, you know, we're all feeling, I think, a lot more settled and a lot more, um, together. Uh, you know, I think we've got a strong school culture and a strong, um, um, systems and processes in place, um, our kids are doing great. Uh, we're just, you know, tomorrow is our last day of M-CAS and, and I've shared this with a couple of groups that I've met with, um, as, as grueling as M-CAS has been and, you know, we'll see how the results are, more than anything else, what I see from our kids is they are, uh, working incredibly hard. They are persevering and we're seeing our kids put in two to three, four hours, five hours of testing in a day. And that tells me, like, we're, um, we're educating and supporting and, um, you know, teaching kids that are gritty. They're persevering, they're working hard, their effort is there and they're feeling like they wanna do their best, they take a lot of pride in what they're doing, so. You know, the results will be what the results are, but I think what we're, we're creating is a culture with our kids and, um, we're creating personalities and, 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 you know, some of the things that aren't measurable, which are far more important than, than the test scores, um, so, I think we're doing a lot of great things at, at Woodland, so it's been a great year.
Thank you, I guess I just wanted to hear what the difference was from last year to this year, it's probably a piece of cake this year.
Uh, well, it's not a piece of cake. But it's, it, but it's, it's definitely been, it's, it's definitely been, you know, we're feeling like our feet are under us and we're not running all the time, um, which is the difference. Like, you know, last year I told you, like, everything we did was a first, this is our first Thursday in, in the new school with this schedule. This is our first, you know, fire, everything was a first.
Right.
And that's all done now, so now it's, okay, now we can look back and tweak and fine-tune and improve what we have in place.
Joe, if I could just add, as a Woodland parent, I think communication is fabulous, Tim, and I think, uh, Tim works really hard to make you feel connected to the school as a parent, and so that's appreciated on the side as well.
Yeah, sure.
Alright.
Okay, so I'll start with the, the handbook, um, there's really no significant, uh, major changes in the handbook. Um, you know, obviously, there's, there's gonna be some changes over the summer as we update staff list, things like that, which are, are, are relatively minor changes. Uh, next year in our schedule, we're gonna be changing the order of our, um, grade level lunches, uh, fifth grade is gonna have first lunch instead of third lunch. And that's just due to some scheduling tweaks that we're gonna make, uh, for next year, uh, so minor changes there. Um, I added some language to, um, to clarify how, which l- absences are considered excused and how they're considered excused. Uh, and that could be found, I'm sorry, on page, uh, on page twenty-three, under, uh, dismissals and illnesses. So, I added some language there just to clarify what's gonna be excused and what's not gonna be excused as, uh, as far as absences go. And then the only, I, I would say, more significant change, and it's, it's really in draft form right now, is, uh, the language around homework, uh, which is fa- found on page thirty. Um, you know, as a district, we're working on having a district-wide philosophy and, and, uh, Mr. Consigli is, is, uh, coordinating that effort and so we're in a draft phase, so I have the dra- the, the most current draft of what we have as far as a district philosophy on homework, uh, found on page thirty and thirty-one. Um, but I know Craig and I had talked about, there's still, um, changes to come as he's getting input from, uh, teachers in the community, so, um, that was included there. So, that we're consistent from, uh, Woodland, Stacy and so on, so. Those are really the only significant, the most significant changes, but it's, other than that, it's just minor tweaks here. Any questions on that before I move on to the improvement plan? Okay, so, starting with the improvement plan, if, if I could, if I could go to the last couple of pages just to give you an update on how we're doing with, um, with this year's goals. And, and one of the reasons I brought Jen up here is to speak to, uh, our second goal. But I'm gonna start with the first one, which is, um, our first goal was to improve our attendance and tardy rates. Um, and our goal was to, uh, decrease our absentee rate and our tardy rate by twenty percent compared to last year's, um, rates. And, uh, I'm really proud to, uh, share that we met our first goal, um, which was to, uh, have our absent daily average be three-point-eight percent. And we exceeded that just by a hair at three-point-seven percent, um, which adds up, uh, which is about five-point-three days per student. Um, so that was a real success, so we decreased our, our, um, absentee rate by twenty percent compared to last year, so. You know, to, to boil it down to the simplest form, kids need to be in school to, to learn and achieve and do well, um, and we, we have them there more often. So, that was done through, uh, a pretty heavy, um, information campaign more than anything else and just keeping families informed as to, uh, attendance rates and the importance of attendance. When it comes to, uh, the tardy rate, um, our goal was to have our daily average be at two-point-four percent and we were a hair above that at two-point-six percent. Um, so, you know, like any good statistician, I, you know, looked at ways to manipulate the data a little bit. And, and so, what I did is I looked at some of our students who, um, have a high, high tardy rate, so chronically tardy. Um, so, looking at students who were tardy thirty or more times over the course of a year. If I took out that, that population, that was our, there was twenty kids that had thirty or more tardies, when I take out that se- that subset, um, so still looking at two hu- nine-hundred-and-sixty-five students, uh, our tardy rate was two-point-zero percent, so well below, um, what our goal was, so. Um, so, so we have some outliers and one of the things that it's not gonna be in our goal, um, cause we wanna keep moving forward and looking at other ways to improve the school, but we're gonna still work on attendance, that's still gonna be a focus area for us. So, what we, taking from this, uh, data is that if we really target those chronically tardy students and look at ways that we can help to get them here on time and keep parents informed about, you know, the importance of timely attendance, um, if we can get that number reduced, you know, it's gonna further, um, you know, support our mission at Woodland School. So, our second goal was, um, our outreach to multilingual and culturally diverse community and there was a couple of different benchmarks that we had. And I brought Jen to join us this, last year when we were proposing this goal, um, at Woodland School, Jen got wind of it and said, hey, I'd like to partner with you on that. So, Jen and I, um, last spring and over the course of the summer, really talked a little bit about ways that, um, she could support Woodland as the E L director, um, in, in, in that mission. So, Jen and I took a course at Harvard over the summer on family engagement, um, driving back and forth every day. We had some good conversations about, um, you know, some of the things that we could do to improve our outreach and engagement with families, um, especially our E L families in the district, so. Looking at some of the benchmarks, um, our email collection campaign to just, just have a, 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 a more robust way of communicating with our families. Uh, we lost track of the data over the course of the year a little bit, so that was hard to track, but I could, I can say that right now, we have ninety-one percent of our families in, in email address for ninety-one percent of our families and, as, as Megan knows, um, and a few of you know, I, you get at least one email a week from me. Um, and usually, there's a couple more, so, our families are staying informed what's, what's going on in, at Woodland School, so. Um, and looking at that, eighty-seven or so families that we don't have email addresses for, i- it was interesting to note that eighty-four percent of those are non-English speaking families. Um, so that's something that we, we're gonna continue to look at. Please.
So, one of the, um, and I think that I talked about this when I came to do the E L presentation, that one of, um, one of our focuses to align to this school improvement plan was to offer digital literacy classes through Title III funds for, um, English learner families in the evening. And Raulio Rodriguez, which is our K-two technology integration specialist, who is bilingual, myself being bilingual, we led, um, a digital literacy class, um, every Thursday evening. Um, we, we ran it through Stacy Middle School, um, Media Center and our goal was to, uh, was, it was really big. And when we got everybody in the room who needed to be there, they really never even touched a computer. So, getting stu- getting them email addresses and then getting that into X two so that they could get emails, but then it was like accessing them and signing on and then understanding the Google platform, cause we wanted them to have Gmail accounts so that it was the same as their child, so as their child grew in the district that they had. So, um, we did start this and a lot of them have, um, we were able to increase the email addresses with our families and then providing them, um, some instruction on how to use the Google platform, but it's a really big learning curve, specifically if they're not in jobs day-to-day that require the use of technology. So, it, it seems like a one-and-done for them and, um, so then we were try- so this year was a real learning cur- curve. We, we plan on implementing more next year, especially because we have, um, twenty teachers in district taking part of the T-Saw grant for a master's, um, in T-Saw. And Sarah Boyle is also part of that master's program and she has so many ideas on how we can push forward technology integration for English learners through the, you know, through the, her work with the master's program, but also with some of these initiatives that we've had on the school improvement plan, so, like, more to come, but we've, we've, we started a base. Uh, people know, um, people in the community know that we're offering these courses and, and that there's interest and it's starting to, um, to, to wave through, yeah.
Another goal of ours was to increase our pool of translators, uh, and while our list has grown a little bit, it's still a concern, um, and particularly when we have events um, that require a large number of, of translators, for example, you know, if you're having a gr- whole grade level gathering, for, for example, like a curriculum night. You know, having, um, you know, sharing five to seven translators for, for the evening is tough, or, you know, parent-teacher conferences, um, where you have as many as fifteen, sixteen, seventeen conferences at a grade level happening at the same time and then you're multiplying that by three. So, you have, you know, forty-five conferences happening at the same time and we have five to seven translators available. And where, you know, if we have, you know, parent-teacher conferences on the same day as Brookside Memorial and Stacy, translators, i- it's a concern for us, so that's something I think, you know, that as a district, we, we need to keep looking at, um, and, and certainly that's something that Jen and I have talked about as well. Uh, we're looking at ways to increase our networking, um, with our community to, for outreach and engagement, uh, that's a goal that I feel like we've met. Um, we've had opportunities to partner with some, uh, local, uh, churches and, uh, community groups, the Milford Youth Center, um, so they get my weekly update every week and they're posting that and distributing it at, at their, um, either at their church gatherings or in the youth center. Uh, we've had a couple of great events such as an E L potluck dinner, which are, uh, our teachers, um, organized, planned, organized, um, and brought together. We had a lot of staff that are not E L teachers because they're just, you know, teachers of these kids and they came to that event and that was a great opportunity. Um, and then one of the best things that came out of this was something that Jen really took on, which was, um, an E L family engagement study group at Woodland. And it was about fifteen teachers or so that all decided to make that part of their professional, um, professional goal as far as, as far as the evaluation process goes. So, Jen was leading a group about, once a month, um, getting these fifteen teachers together and, and to do a study of Woodland and talk about action. and and to do a study of Woodland and talk about action steps. So I'm gonna let you talk about that a little bit, Jen, 'cause that was an exciting outcome.
So after the um institute at Harvard, um it came through that uh Karen Mack led that. She's professor, her, all of her research is on family engagement and involvement. And so I took her book, uh it's called Beyond the Bake Sale. And how, uh, I read it first, and then I went to Tim with the idea of creating a PLC and just sending it out to the whole school to see who would be interested. So um, yes, we wanna target English learners, but we wanna like target family engagement for all, right? So um, I sent it out to the uh the, to Tim, and he sent it out to the entire staff and got a lot of interest back. So our first uh meeting was really like, let's develop what we want. So um, what do we wanna see as it aligns to the school improvement plan? So what we decided to do with the um book was do a th- a three-phase project. So the first phase is, let's understand what best what best practices are around family engagement. Let's be become experts in family engagement. So what we ended up doing is like taking sections of the book, reading it on our own, meeting in small groups in the school at different times to answer certain questions, come back and have conversations around what we learned and create an app, create a document when we met to say like, what are some pieces that we see that are best practice that we find applicable here at Woodland? So we did that through the whole book for the whole uh first third of the year, school year. The second third of the school year is like, now that we know this knowledge of what's best practices, where are we with Woodland Elementary School in alignment with what we think is best practices? So let's start doing like a needs assessment. So we took a lot of pieces from the chapter, uh chapters of the book where we were checklist, like how's your school doing on welcoming school, like how are they doing on? So we uh did this whole self-analysis. And then the third part of the year, um which wrapped up end of April, because they have to get all their data together for their for their evaluation and submitted. So we wanted to make sure we were on a timeline that aligned to their teacher evaluation, um was what are our action plan for a year two? So many of the teachers who joined in are on a one-year evaluation, but some of them are on a two-year project. And so um, two-year plan, and so they wanted to then take their actions from this year, their the actions that they developed for this year and make it into their goal for next year. You'll see some of that, I think that Tim will talk to, um, there's um your goal three for this coming school year as far as um if we want stu- if we want parents to be involved, how do we build dual capacity? So we have to build the capacity for teacher, but we also have to build the teacher's capacity. So if we have um certain prod- uh certain um pieces in place such as grade level expectations, then parents know them and our teachers know them, then we can start having real conversations if we're building capacity in both um both sectors. So we talked about pieces like that. We talked about um what it would look like for um workshops and building capacity. And so we've been able to have little conversations coming out with um the Milford uh federat- what is their term, their term?
Foundation, Ed Foundation?
Yes, the Ed Foundation that just came to speak to you guys a couple months ago um about Parent University. And so there's a lot of the teachers that were part of this that wanted to be part of the workshops that emailed me and said, hey, we're seeing that this Parent University, how do we bring our proj- our year-two goal into so that we're all not working in silos? So there's a lot of uh great conversation happening and it's spreading into different sections. Um, also, we've been able to be very uh write grants, and we started this Family Bridges. I don't know if you've seen posts on Twitter and everything, so um, and one of our big, last big event was what can you do over the summer? And so like Sarah Hummiston was there representing Family Network. We had our Family Resource Center there. We had um teachers uh from, two third-grade teachers volunteer there at time to talk about what the transition looks like from second to third, but we had interpreters moving with um, and that was um offered to all newcomer families and um uh newly, new um new to the district. So they might not be newcomer families, but transitioning to the district and the EL program, and we had over eighty full attend. And um rotating through to see what activities and um learn more about the Summer Success Program that happens. Um, the, we had um people there speaking also about the Summer Feeding um Program. So it was very well attended and um so all of it coming out of our initial conversation. And um so it didn't just happen at Woodland, it started at Woodland and now it's spreading. So it's really a good thing to see that like the efforts that the um School Council put together last year have now spread to other s- schools.
And I think our last benchmark really speaks to that, and this is more of a, it it wasn't a um, you know, a quantifiable benchmark, but more anecdotal, like what does the eyeball tell you? And and what are we experiencing at, you know, events, school events like parent-teacher conferences, movie night, bingo night? You know, we had a cleanup that Meg, you attended, like who are we seeing? Who are the faces, who are the families that we're seeing attending this? And are we seeing an improvement in 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 growth in our EL families' attendance at these events? Are they feeling welcomed and supported and like, this is their school too? And we absolutely did. Um, you tell, you know, from teacher to teacher, administrators, are we seeing more attendance at these events from our EL families? And the answer is absolutely yes. Um, so I I hope that we're creating the culture and the environment and the climate to be welcoming at Woodland for for our diverse families. Um, I, and and I think, you know, we are. Um, it's where, we still have, you know, growth. And we, you know, as Jen mentioned, for this, a a couple of our our teachers, and something I'm certainly gonna promote, is carrying this on to year two and building on this. It's so, even though it's not a goal for us in the in the new school improvement plan, it's something, you know, we ha- we still have a lot of work to do and and we're happy to do it and and excited to do it, so. Um, I wanna thank Jen for partnering with us and and um helping to lead some of these uh initiatives this year. So she's been a great resource for us, so. Uh, and finally, our last goal from from this past year was um all-around technology and making the transition from just what do we have and just let's use it to now making sure that it's more uh integrated into teaching and learning. Um, and I'm happy to say we met all of our goals and exceeded one. One of our goals uh we identified was using uh Google Classroom to manage uh workflow from teacher to student, student to teacher, um and just, you know, using that as a management tool for assignments and projects and things like that. Our goal was to get sixty percent of our staff using it. Um, and at last count, we had eighty percent of our staff that was saying that they were using it on a on a frequent, regular basis to to manage workflow uh within the classroom. Uh, so I think that's a great start. Uh, we looked at um ninety percent of staff incorporating technology every day. And I think that they were a little hard on themselves when I asked them to self-rate, how much are you using technology on a daily basis? Uh, about eighty-one percent said, yes, I'm using it every day. About seventeen percent said, often, but maybe not daily. Um, but in my observations, both formal and informal, a hundred percent of staff are using it a hundred percent of the day. I mean, whether it's Chromebooks and projectors to um laptops, to digital cameras, uh websites and, you know, apps, Classroom Dojo, it it's 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 everywhere we look. Teachers are using it a hundred percent of the day um to uh deliver instruction, to uh monitor learning, to communicate with families, um, you know, t- it's it's been, it's been awesome. Um, and I think we've really made that transition from, you know, look at the shiny new toy that we have to how is this gonna impact teaching and learning? And I'm seeing that um every day, and that's been really impressive. And then last but not least, it's just using our own um internal um Google Drive as a di- as a school just to manage all the professional workflow of, you know, whether it's agendas for meetings or curriculum documents to assessments. Do we have it all in one place that everyone has access to and everyone knows where it is? That we act, uh we that we accomplished that goal. Um, it's completed, we're still using, you know, there's still a few people like, where do I find this? And it's, it's all there, like everything you need is in our Google Drive. It's the, it's the One West Drive, um, so people are using it. Um, we're still, you know, rounding it out and filling it in, um, but it's definitely ma- helped us to manage our professional workflow as well. So everyone knows where to find, like I said, a curriculum document, a meeting agenda, notes from a meeting that they couldn't attend, uh to, you know, TCT meetings where teachers are recording their notes on students that they're talking about. Chris and I can look at if we can't attend a meeting, so we're able to just um, you know, stay in contact with each other and 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 really just um see what's going on digitally. So that's an update on on this year's goals, so. Do I wanna take questions on this now, Joe, or should I?
Um, yeah, we can take questions if anybody has any questions.
So it's probably a question more for for Kevin than than you, but um this was a very well-done summary uh of of last year's goals. Is is expectation that um principals are gonna be coming in going forward?
Absolutely, absolutely. And Corey, part of like with uh Corey, Dr. Masterson's presentation on the preschool, is her format was very different, and I think the format, her big jump this year was the format was evolved. And I think next year, it'll be like, 'cause like, and she said this, the year before was more of a checklist, like you did this, we do do this. So it wasn't a lot of analysis connected to it. I think next year you're gonna see a similar presentation from, you know, Dr. Masters and and the other principals. They'll put their own spin on it, but I think it'll it'll kinda follow a similar pattern.
Yeah, I love it, Tim, I think it's great. And I know when when Scott had brought it up last year, wasn't too sure how it was gonna come to fruition, but I I dig it, I think this looks great.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Anybody else? How about it? So um, looking ahead to this next uh school year's goal. So our first goal um that we're gonna be looking at uh is investigating health education at Woodland School, uh which is under uh the the strategic plan goals of social-emotional learning and growth-focused instruction. So we're gonna be looking at um what options might we have for health education at Woodland, not for next school year, not for the eighteen, nineteen school year, but for the nineteen, twenty school year and beyond. So our goal is to study this, um, look at some of the options and opportunities that we might have available to us, look at what uh what's happening in surrounding school districts, and then making a proposal to uh Dr. McIntyre, Mr. Consigli and the school committee uh next fall um as part of the early budget cycle. So i- if it did have a budget impact for the nineteen, twenty school year, um that we have, you know, some recommendations in place and and some research to support that. Currently at Woodland School, we don't have a comprehensive health education program. Students are taught, you know, health uh concepts and wellness concepts somewhat during PE class, um somewhat in the nurse's office, somewhat in the classroom, but that's certainly not a consistent, comprehensive health education program. Right now, in the Milford Public Schools, health education begins at sixth grade, and to teach healthy habits of body and mind and waiting until sixth grade, we've missed a lot of years of trying to en- you know, engrain those habits and and teach those concepts that are so important. Um, so, you know, that's something that we wanna investigate um next year. It, there's a, there's a million different permutations to how it might work in a into our schedule or into our classrooms, whether it's adding it as a special or um integrating it as part of our PE uh classes. It can look a lot of different ways, but um looking at some what some of the, you know, some of the early research that I've done in talking to some of the districts around us, uh some school districts are offering it starting at kindergarten, and it's a K to twelve um or K to eight um curriculum. I- it's a special, just like art, music, PE. Um, so there's some districts that are taking that approach. Some districts are starting it in fifth grade. Um, and typically, if they're not doing it something like K to twelve or K to eight, why they're starting it in fifth grade is usually generally around uh the beginning of adolescence and puberty. And that's when there's a lot of, you know, changes happening to to kids. Um, a- and there's a lot of different pressures and um things that are part of their world that aren't there at the early ele- elementary ages, so. Where we're starting, n- you know, not until sixth grade, I think i- is uh something we need to look at as a district and a and at Woodland School. Previous to the realignment, the fifth graders were receiving health education um at Stacy's school. Um, but when, you know, things have shifted, it's not starting until sixth grade. So that's something that we're gonna be looking at. So putting together a studies committee, including uh teachers, parents, um, you know, administrators certainly, and and just looking at what are some of the options and curriculums that are out there around us, and then making some recommendations going forward for next year. So that's something that we're gonna be looking at. Uh, our second goal is looking at uh our practice of common assessments, and that and that's something that we're doing in conjunction with the work that uh Mr. Consigli's doing throughout the district of um looking at our curriculum, consistently revising it and updating it. And so adding common assessments is something that we wanna do. So next year, our plan is to develop a plan, a consistent plan for all of our uh grade levels and contents as to when we're assessing our students, um why we're assessing our students. And then more importantly, it's not just identifying what the assessments are, it's how are we gonna analyze that data? Or I should say, to back that up a second, how are we gonna collect the data, analyze it, share it, and then act on it? So having some expectations, so developing those, it's not just, this is our plan, you're gonna test this subject on this date, but it's, okay, what are we gonna do with it? Um, and that's one of the uh conversations that we had quite a bit at the uh school council level, Megan, and and you you know this is. You know, we had a couple of teachers that were like, well, we've heard this before. And then, you know, we develop the assessments and that's it. So that's what a, one of the things that I wanna really focus in on is it's more than just identifying the assessments, it's what are we gonna do with them when we have the data from the assessments? Like, how are we gonna share that, teacher to teacher? Um, how are we gonna act on it, you know, as a school? Like, if we see that, okay, we we're missing this concept, we're missing this skill, we're not addressing the standard, what are we gonna do next? Um, so having that as part of the expectations in the plan. And finally, our third goal um is looking at developing grade level guides. Um, and this um is for bo- it's a, it's a, it's a combination goal um that affects teachers and families. So first, as a, at the teacher level, it's it's often very difficult to get all of our teachers together at the same time to talk about some of these things, 'cause we have such big sections and big grade level groups. So what we do see is from classroom to classroom, while we do have, you know, certainly a common curriculum that we're using, some of the expectations are different from teacher to teacher. And while I would never hope to or imagine having every classroom be exactly the same, um that's just a a ridiculous goal. You know, every teacher is different, every teacher has different personality and different style, that's, which is, I I wanna celebrate and foster that. But we do need to have some um common expectations for a grade level. So as a third grader, as a reader, what are three or four things that every third b- third grader we can expect of? As a writer, every third-grade writer should be able to do X, Y, and Z. And those are some things that we need to prioritize. If you look at our our state standards, you know, the academic standards, you know, there's something like Craig, help me out, fifty-something reading standards per grade level? And while our teachers are addressing all of those different standards at grade levels, I think we need to be able to prioritize, what are three or four things that we're gonna say, every third grader is gonna leave here able to do this? And have those conversations as st- as teachers, and then publicize that and share that with families. So when you get these grade level guides, this is what a Woodland third grader looks like. This is what a Woodland fourth grader looks like. Not only just in reading, writing, math, but in as as um as people. What are their approaches to learning? What is their, what is the expected social-emotional development? What is some expected behaviors of a third grader? What are they gonna, what are some goals in art and PE and in music? Just so that w- and it's not gonna, like, like I said, I'm, it's not gonna be fifty different, you know, here are fifty things that a third grader can do as a reader. Let's name like three things and share that with um with families so that we're all speaking the same language. And we can all have those conversations with families about, here, these are the expectations for third grade, and here's how your child is doing relative to those. And here's what we're gonna do to support them to meet those expectations, or here's what we're gonna do to extend those expectations for your child. So identifying some real priority standards and priority um beliefs for our third graders, fourth graders, and fifth graders going forward, and being able to have those conversations with families, so. Um, you know, it's a, it's a, it's a bonus on both sides. Getting teachers together to talk about these things, um and getting, you know, fifteen teachers together in a room to agree on anything is really difficult. So getting them together to agree on, you know, three priority standards for reading, three priority standards for math. That's gonna be a challenge, but it it's a worthwhile one, 'cause I think what comes out of that is a real focus on what's important to us as a, at Woodland School for our third graders, fourth graders, fifth graders? What's important for our families to know uh about what we want for our kids? Um, so that's gonna be our third goal.
Awesome. Um, that's it. I'll open it up to any member, if any questions or comments?
I do. So when I was looking over your school, the handbook, and I was looking at the staffing list, it it really is daunting to look at the number of staff members in that elementary school that you lead every day. And um I think it is an amazing fact that you've gone through the construction. I think anyone that's gone through school construction has to understand that even once the building is put up and you're you're moving in, that process isn't over for a school principal. And I can only imagine how much work was spent last year dealing with just the building itself and the punch list and all those things. And when you look at the goals that you've already achieved and the fact that you're sitting here with our EL director today, I mean, I think that that is very powerful, that the two, even though you, it's only 'cause you weren't here, but you're actually on the side of the table now. But that's, that's really powerful to see the things that you you're moving, you're moving from with this enormous number of people. You're moving from um construction and getting a building together and beginning um to put together a community, and now you're really focusing And now you're really focusing on kind of the pillars. And when we talk about our high school and how are we moving our students forward and how are we preparing our students? It starts at Cory's level where she talked about the preschool today and it's kind of a nice compliment that you hear is our, our, we, our oldest elementary school. Um, but just looking at the umbrella items that you talked about and family engagement and engaging our ELs, which is such a huge proportion of our population. And thinking about the best instructional practices in assessment, um, those are all really huge tasks and you may not achieve everything in a year's time. And that's really okay, but I think the, the topics and the conversations are so huge, um, in terms of where Woodland School fits in our whole s- kind of K to twelve system. Um, so, I, you know, I really compliment you and not to mention that you had the loss of your assistant principal, um, who's been really a- another pillar of that school. Even though you had a great replacement, it's still not the same, but you've still managed to accomplish and achieve and even the basic about attendance. And when we talk about readiness for school and so many kids are coming in not ready and we still have lots of kids that aren't even coming to school or whose families don't yet understand the, how critical, and you, you can't just make it up, it's not.
No.
I- it's not okay to just get the homework, um, on a regular basis, so I, I really have to compliment you. Everything you have on the, the health education, I mean, to me, that's been something that's been missing, um, from our district. And it, our kids aren't always getting that at home and i- it is one more thing that's put on the schools. But, um, I think your plan to reflect on that and put together a proposal will be really meaningful and helpful for lots of our students. So, thank, thank you both for your work. And, you know, the last thing that I can say is, and I think I've said this here before, when we look at the, um, educator evaluation system and we look at the difference between proficient and exemplary, exemplary is modeling. And that's really the big difference between those two categories and everything that you talked about, about going to the class, coming back, all of these interesting ideas that you have about how you're gonna share that out. Um, you know, you could take everything you learned and keep it in a notebook, or you could have these committees and bring people together and share that knowledge and, um, and plant those seeds and you've done that. So, that's, that's really exemplary work, so, thank you for, for your leadership of the building and your leadership and, and, and contributions in such an important way, too.
We, I think we worked hard as a district to try and ha- build that continuity from building to building and, and Jen is certainly a key component of that. Um, you know, being between all six buildings, um, a- and, you know, a- and you mentioned, you know, seeing Cory at one end today and me at the other end. And, you know, I met with, you know, Seth and Lisa today a- at Brooks at Memorial, just to talk about ele- you know, just some elementary issues. So, just making sure that it's not just a three to five school, but it's a pre-K to five continuum. Um, and we were talking about our summer reading program and, and they shared theirs and it, without talking to Woodland about what we were planning, it was exactly the same. So, we're, we're, you know, the idea that we could develop two different summer reading programs, independent of each other, and they look exactly the same, tells us that we're thinking the same ideas and we're sharing those, those conversations, um, as an elementary school. So, I thought that was pretty cool and pretty exciting that we're, we're working towards that, you know, pre-K to five continuum and then, you know, going from there, so.
That's great, thank you.
Joe?
So, i- 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 it really is amazing how, how well that school is hitting on all cylinders, given, um, the size of the school and how lean your, your staff is there, um, and that credit goes to you and, and the staff at, at, at Woodland. And I know that during this, this budget season, um, some of the most difficult decisions we made were around Woodland and, and unfortunately weren't able to support some of the initiatives that you put forward, but, um, I would certainly expect that you put those forward again next year.
You're just gonna say it again.
And then we're gonna do our best to support those.
This is, this is our tradition at Woodland School, ask and ask again.
And that's what we like to say, you know, right? If it's important one year, it's gonna be important the next. So, um, you know, we're g- we're certainly gonna do our part to advocate for you and, and get you the resources that you need there.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I would just add, and maybe it's not fair, 'cause I probably spent the most time on this plan, Tim, but how pervasive the goals are in terms of being aligned with our strategic plan and fundamentally with the social emotional learning, attendance and the health and how all of those things elevate the entire district. And I think, you know, you see Seth came in also with an attendance goal and you're reaching out to, you know, families across the district. Um, Jen, I think it, it just brings us all up, so I think it, I think they're all great ideas and I, I look forward to seeing them implemented.
Thank you.
Awesome, quick question.
Okay.
On the attendance goal, can you elaborate a little bit more what you felt was probably the, the catalyst to, to improve your numbers so significantly? And, and I guess is that being addressed across the district to maybe any of the other schools that may have similar issues bringing kids into school on time?
Yeah, so, great question. Um, it actually, what, uh, got me thinking about what was gonna be the most powerful thing was something that we actually saw at the family engagement, um, course that we were at. We, we, there was one of our keynote speakers, um, and I'm, I'm blanking on his name, um, but he was a former, uh, political operative. And then he became an educator 'cause he was tired of the politics, but, um, and, and his, um, his focus area is how do you persuade people? How you change people's habits of mind and change their, uh, perspectives on things. Um, and one of the things that he shared that, uh, was really interesting because, um, it's something that I know is true of me. He shared how, um, energy companies have changed the way people use energy in their home. And one of the, the biggest catalyst for that was, and you probably all get them, is you get that summary like every month of how you s- how you compare to, you know, the most efficient neighbors and, you know, where you fall on that like little line plot. Um, and I know that's something that, you know, I take a lot of pride in when I'm the lowest and Joe, you know, I, I, staring at my solar panels. Um, it's something I take a lot of pride in, but i- it was just information and that's what it was about. Like, when you inform people about, um, and it's kind of like a social pressure, when you inform people how they're performing or how they're behaving relative to their community and to their peers, it cha- it often changes behavior. Um, so, one of the things that we made sure to do is keep parents informed about our attendance, uh, excuse me, attendance rates. So, traditionally, you don't get an attendance rate, uh, or update until report card time, which is Novem- mid-November, March, and June. In June, it's too late, so you really only get two updates all year. And for, I think a lot of families, what happens is there's, you know, there's absences and tardies. And because they're not happening in chunks, it's a day here, a day there, a tardy here, a tardy there, you lose track of them. And it kind of slips under the radar and then all of a sudden the number is huge. So, one of the things that we made, made sure we did is update families more often. So, rather than waiting till the first report card, which is, you know, mid-November-ish, in that range, we sent out a letter to every family in October, uh, at the end of October. Your child's been absent this many times, has been tardy this many times. Um, and just, you know, left it at that, you know, just attendance, you know, you know, consistent attendance is important to school achievement. Um, timely attendance is important as well, something like that, you know, a letter like that. Um, and we got some reaction to that, um, you know, I, I think, you know, just calling it out made some people unhappy a little bit. Um, but that was okay, uh, 'cause the goal was important. And then we had the report cards, um, and then we did another update, you know, in between the report cards. So, we're keeping families updated, um, as to how their, their child i- is attending school. Um, in my weekly update, I include attendance rates every day, uh, every week. So, this week our attendance rate was this, this was our tardy rate, so I'm keeping parents informed on a weekly basis. Um, so, on the soccer field, hey, you made your attendance goal this week, this is great. So, just keeping families informed, that was important. And then the other really powerful thing that we did, um, and, and Mr. Chris Sang, our assistant principal, did this, uh, started it over the summer. So, he looked back at last year's attendance data and identified, you know, how, you know, people that, uh, are kids that were absent a lot, tardy a lot, and he started making phone calls in July, in August. Hey, I saw that, you know, your son was out a lot, you know, just wanna let you know, we're here to help and support, you know, is there anything that, you know, you can tell us? And that personal connection was really important. So, for a lot of families, we found out information over the summer about why their kid was absent or tardy that we didn't know. So, we were, would approach it differently. So, we sat down with teachers at the beginning of the year, hey, just a heads up, you know, be aware of this with this student, be aware of that with thi- this student. And I think that personal relationship that we started to form with families and that connection, um, and that we also, you know, tried to transfer to the teachers, was really powerful. So, we had some kids that missed a lot of time because of a situation going on at home that we were totally unaware about. Well, now we can put in supports, maybe we need to tie this student to one of our adjustment counselors. Or maybe we need to keep a closer eye on this student with the school nurse. So, we were able to make, you know, get that personal information on an individual basis, and I think that was really powerful. And we kept that up throughout the year. So, you know, every couple of weeks, Chris and I would sit down and look at the attendance data, you call this family, I'll call this family, let's see what's going on. Or I see a big spike with this kid, you know, let's talk to our school nurses, what do they know? A- and just making contact on an individual basis, um, was really powerful as well.
Good, um, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Sure.
Anybody else?
All right, so what we need to do, we need to take a vote on this again like we did with Shining Star. Um, can I get a motion to accept the handbook and student, uh, school approval, please? Uh, motion by Joe, second by Jen, all in there? All right, thank you guys.
All right, thank you.
Thanks for coming, Tim, I appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
Great job. All right, next on the agenda is report of superintendent of schools.
Great, thank, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, the first, the first piece is the, um, superintendent evaluation tool. And in your packets are two documents, which I'll also share with each of you individually. Um, one is the, um, overall superintendent evaluation tool. And we simplified it last year and I think it kind of worked, where we just, um, did broad ratings across the, the four key areas. And I'm just trying to pull up a document here, um, which are, um, instructional leadership, management and operations, family and community engagement, and professional culture. And I put all the, um, the sub-indicators in the, which, which were in the broader packet. So, what I'm gonna provide with, to all the committee members is, um, a few documents. And I, and I try to make it as streamlined as possible bec- and I don't wanna bury you in, like, artifacts and information, but what I wanna do is give some key, um, accomplishments or benchmarks for each of the areas to share with you, as well as progress on goals. So, you'll be getting four documents next week, basically. One is the, 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 and I'm not sure if we can do it as a Google Doc or it's just gonna be a document that we share together based on open meeting regulations, I just wanna clarify that. So, it could be a Google Doc that we just put all the information in, or it could be a separate document that everybody gives to Joe. Um, you'll get the, the evaluation tool, which is kind of extensive, it's about twenty-five or twenty-six pages and it's fa- fascinating to read. And, um, and I'm gonna give you.
PowerPoint, I hope.
What's that?
PowerPoint, I hope.
It isn't, no, I mean, we'll put a PowerPoint in them, like, 'cause I know you appreciate those. Uh, the third one is gonna be just the, the, um, the kind of the accomplishments and, and benchmarks connected to each of the areas. And the fourth document is just gonna be progress on goals, which I, that actually was a PowerPoint that I shared with you recently, so you're welcome. Um, if you have questions on any aspect of the process, I'm happy to answer those questions and just how, like, you know, especially with the new committee members, because it's, it's, it's kind of a new ground for you to cover. And Edivale is a very complex thing. We actually have a standing subcommittee that meets, I, I would say like a handful of times a year to really go over like, the, uh, the documents we're using, working, is the language correct? What are some of the issues we're facing? We sit down, actually, with the association and have these conversations on a regular basis. And we tend to make tweaks on both sides, like we see, like, a process issue, they see like an interpretation issue, we work through it and we shift the document every year. So, it's very complex. I'm trying to simplify that as much as possible, um, but please reach out if you have questions about what something means. Um, if you see something in evidence and it's jargon heavy, just, just, just ask me. Um, and I'm happy to have that conversation. If you, if, if you have, especially the newer members who weren't here for, for the bulk of the year, I'm happy to explain like any of the things that are in the, in the document. Um, the other, the other thing I passed out tonight and I shared it as a document a little earlier, is two potential timelines. And, um, one timeline is, I wanna share this information out with you i- ideally on Monday, uh, in either, in either situation. And then have an open period, which could go from May twenty-second to June fourth, or May twenty-second to July second. And then I wanted to give enough time for the chair to kind of compile the information and pull it together. And so, we could either target, and, and there's other dates too, we could, we could shift it in September if you wanted to. Um, June twenty-first or July nineteen, and it's just really the committee's pleasure of, do they want kind of a more compact timeframe? Or do you want kind of a little bit longer time to contemplate? I find that, I'm like water, if you give me a long deadline, I tend to fill that. If you give me a shorter deadline, I tend to fill that, and it's really just up to what the committee wants to do.
Joe?
S- so, um, and I was gonna throw out, out to the, the committee, my, my, my suggestion would be the, the shorter timeline, go with the review on the twenty-first and then use the meeting on the nineteenth for our, our goals. Um, so, once we've defined what your goal's gonna be for the year, ours should be correlated to some extent. Um, so that will then give us some time to establish goals for, for this committee that are in line with, with yours.
Anybody else?
I don't, I don't have an issue with going with the earlier timeline, but I wonder if there's a way we can, um, extend it a little bit? It, I don't know if there's some kind of option one and a half. Um, and the reason why I'm asking that is when I look at the dates from May twenty-second to June fourth, that's really smack in the middle of a lot of nights out for us. Graduation, all the senior nights, so even if we could add a week or two to option one, uh, I don't know what that would do to our, our meeting dates, even if we shifted our m- our, our meeting dates for the summer.
Uh, y- one, one thing we could do is, like, shift the June twenty-first meeting to a, a date in early July, but again, that's July fourth week. I know a lot of people are away, which gets tricky.
Mm-hmm.
Um.
Jo- Joe, what, when would you need, so this, this lays out, um, so we would provide the feedback by June fourth. It would give you until the fourteenth to compile everything, and then we'd need the twenty-first. Um, so is there some flexibility in, in that? Maybe we give the information to Joe by June tenth and then you compile everything by June sixteenth or seventeenth, like a few days before the meeting?
Yeah. I, I think we could do that, huh? I wouldn't have a problem changing it to a couple days.
The only, the only issue with, is you guys just wouldn't get the information like a week ahead of time, like we try to put the, the packets together like on Monday. There's, there's a chance that you'd get it like a day or two before.
Yeah.
That'd be the only issue.
Yeah, and that's, um, and I'll have to, I'll have to go back and look at the, the rule around that, 'cause it, I, I don't think we can actually see it until, we ca- I think we can see the compiled information until, uh, post a meeting, because it might violate the open meeting laws. Now, we're seeing each other's evaluation of, of the superintendent, so I think that was an issue in, in the past with co- compiling the information. So, we may not be able to see it until that day of the twenty-first anyway. We'll have to go back and look at some rule around that.
Okay.
Can I ask a question? What is, as a former chairman, what is compiling involved?
So, he, he's gonna ba- basically take everyone's responses and incorporate it into one document. Um, so, you'll be able to see how I evaluated Kevin, how, how all the other members evaluated Kevin.
Is it as simplistic as cut and paste, or is it something that requires nine days?
Y- yeah, it's, um, i- i- it, to some extent, it's cut, the cut and paste where there's overlap, um, he'll, he'll streamline it. Um, but he's not, he's not adjusting your evaluation in, in any way.
Okay.
Uh, he's just taking the information and looking for the overlap and put it all in one document.
And, 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 I, I don't know how long it takes, I mean, I'll go off of what Joe says too, because he's done it before in the past, I'm sure you'll, you know, we'll, we'll collaborate and work this out together. But, anything that works for everybody, I'll, I'm, I'm game with that, timeframe is no issue for me, so. Um, this is something that we just wanna hold off to everyone, mull this over for a little bit and we'll figure out the exact dates that we wanna do, or.
Well, could we agree to having until the tenth and then would you have between the tenth and the fourteenth, Joe? I don't know if that's too tight for you, I don't wanna sign you up for.
Um, no, I, I'm, I'm sure I could do it, yeah.
Could I ask you, uh, what would, if we use the nineteenth, is, if we had a meeting that lasted two hours, do we see evaluation lasting more than an hour and setting our goals lasting more than an hour? Is there a way that we can come, the o- I'm only concerned about the number of, we have three new members, some of whom aren't familiar with the evaluation tool. We have a brand new chair who hasn't done this before. I, I ju- I, I just don't wanna rush it, um, I'd like to see it done in a more quell. And if people have questions, I don't want people to feel like they can't ask their questions because we're trying to meet a dead, I mean, it's really an arbitrary deadline. But I, what I do think is really important is that we don't move it into September. I think in fairness to you, you need to have the feedback and, and your evaluation. You've worked for a full year and you, you are entitled to that evaluation before the start of the school year.
Yeah, the, um, the compensation could start July first, right?
But that could be retroactive, you know, if, yeah, that, that's not a, that's not an issue.
Okay.
All right, so.
Wanna go with the nineteenth?
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
All right, yeah, that's, that, that's, that's fine.
Is that okay?
Yeah, that's fine, yeah, it's whatever, that's why I put the two options on, 'cause I wanna see what you get from comfortable.
All right, that's, what else you got?
Yeah, and Joe, just one more question on that, and just, I'd be curious to get your feedback, the members that did the evaluation last year, were you guys comfortable with that template? Um, I know you've also used a DSE template in, in the past, did you have any feedback on?
I think, I think what we did last year was a lot easier, I mean, a h- a lot easier than what we did the year before that. So, I think the format that we're using now is a lot easier and better for us to use. And I think these, uh, if for the new guys, it will work out a lot easier as well. Absolutely.
And I'm, and I'm providing. And I'm, and I'm providing, Joe, which I didn't provide last year, a document that kind of breaks down like each area. So I'll give you guys all that feedback like by, like, not individual indicator, but by, I forget the language it is. Like, they're, I think they're called indicators. So e- within each um standard, there's a, there's a group of indicators. So I didn't do it by the, the individual line item, but by each indicator area. So like, each indicator has anywhere from three to seven areas. Instead of going it, like, the sub-indicator by sub-indicator, I'm gonna give you some information by indicator. So you're gonna have that, so you're not trying to kinda go back and say, ooh, how, you know, you know what it means. You're gonna have some context, which I didn't provide last year.
Yeah, and I, I, I think one, one of the differences between the D E S E template and, and, and this template is, um, so this template lays out the standards. Um, and then, um, as part of the comment section, we can incorporate some of the indicators that you're talking about.
A- abso- absolutely, yeah.
But what this document doesn't have, and we can still do it as part of the comment section, is um your progress towards the goals. Whereas a D E S E template has that at the beginning and then it goes in the standards of the indicators.
So, so you know, I can add that as a separate box on the document. And then, somebody can give you the goal information anyway. So you're gonna have the progress on the goals and I'll give you space to comment on it.
Okay.
Does that work?
Yeah, that, that'd be good.
And then it's still simple, but it's, we're still on like one or two pages. It, it goes, and it'd be a lot longer than that when the information is built in.
Mm-hmm.
But yeah, I can add that very easily.
Okay.
And make it part of the template.
What do you have next? That's it?
Uh, ye- yes, we're withdrawing the out-of-state travel request.
Yes. Alright, next is report of the assistant superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, so Tim and Jen kinda said a lot of the things that I was gonna say. Um, what, this idea of a, it, it, it started as a parent university and a lot of, a lot of urban districts have parent universities. Uh, Boston is a very strong one. Um, Springfield is a very strong one. Um, and it came out of, really, I took a similar course as, as um Tim and, and Jen did in my doctoral studies. Um, and I read the same book. Um, but something I heard Christina and Vin say kinda got me thinking about how we could use the Ed Foundation and catch all of these different parent engagement things that we're doing in the district into one, under one umbrella. Um, so w- I met with Christina and I met with Vin and we came up with this idea of Hawk University. Uh, we wanted to get the parent, just that word parent out of there because there are so many different um people that may raise a child these days. Um, so we came up with Hawk University. Uh, we came up with a, a vision statement, uh, which is promoting family and community engagement and facilitating learning opportunities for parents, guardians, and caretakers of the past, present, and future students of the Milford Public School District. Uh, we put out this event that we're, we're planning on having on June sixteenth. Um, and we, I think we have high expectations. But when we put out the event, when we put it out to the public via our email, we got two hundred and two responses.
Wow.
Which I think is tremendous. Um, and we just asked, we had a whole list of, of different uh ideas. And we asked the, the families, you know, what topics would you be most interested in? And what ended up, what we ended up getting back was s- uh, six or seven that kinda rose to the top. One being college and career readiness, one homework skills, uh bullying peer relationships, uh, and n- under that navigating social media, um supporting important life skills. Uh, families are interested in scholarship and financial aid information, uh transitions from elementary to middle school, and ed technology. Kind of almost a lot of the things that you heard tonight from all the different schools, uh, and Matt Joseph too. Uh, so our next steps are to kind of build a, a group of presenters, um, which we're on our way toward doing. I'm kinda worried about the timing of June sixteenth and I know there's a lot going on for people. And I'm glad that we got two hundred and two people to respond and say, yeah, I'd be interested. But I'm a little worried about June sixteenth and being a Saturday and, you know, the start of summer. Um, so we do have high expectations, uh, and we do plan on running it. It's, we, we've set it up kinda like a, I guess, the kind of the way we run our professional development in-house where families would be able to go and we'd have a list of, of different sessions that they could choose from and they could go to three different sessions, um, and learn about whatever it is that they wanna learn about under these, uh, these topics. Um, I think we're, we're on our way, but where I see this going is we have these different type of events through the year on Saturdays. But then we also have other kinds of classes, um, b- like ones that Jen was talking about, but how to, how parents could get engaged in schools, um, how maybe like a volunteer class where we run parents through, um, a session of classes so that they can volunteer in schools. Um, different ed technology classes offered throughout the year. Um, involving Sarah Humston's group in this, I think is also important. But just having like one umbrella that all of these different things come under. So it isn't a silo, it isn't that Woodland's doing this or Stacy's doing that or, you know, the Sarah Humston's group is doing another thing. It's all under this one space so that people know, alright, I'm interested in learning something, I know I can go to this. Um, so that's a, the general overview of what, of what we have in mind, so.
Joe, sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, so ju- ju- just one, one suggestion. This is a, a perfect um scenario for, for recorded presentations.
Mm-hmm.
Mm.
'Cause I, obviously we've always struggled with attendance, right? We do our best to hold these forums and nobody ever shows up. Um, but th- this is a great situation where we could potentially record these, u- using Google or some other functionality and then create a page on the district website where we store everything and then people can access it on their own schedule and, and on their own time.
I, I think it's a good idea. I think I'd, I'm inclined to wait until after the first one's done. So maybe moving forward, um, I think, I wanna see with the first one, what we get out of the first one. Um, I know that we're, we're getting some community members that wanna uh present also, which I think is great. Um, but I'm, I'm wondering if they're not gonna wanna be recorded either. So that's another, just another piece that I think moving forward is a good idea. I don't know, if anybody else has any questions?
Any other questions?
Sounds awesome.
Yeah.
Sounds great, Craig.
Excellent.
Alright, awesome.
I, in, oh, sorry, just one more question. This is all done through the education foundation, right? Or is some of this coming out of our budget?
I don't think it's, there's gonna be a cost right now associated with it.
Right now, no.
Um, but it's kind of a partnership between the school department and the foundation.
Perfect.
Yep.
Thank you. Um, report of the assistant superintendent of business.
Yes, sir.
Go for it, Kathy.
Um, alright, so tonight I have six warrants for your approval. Um, the first warrant is in the amount of twenty-nine thousand three hundred ninety-four dollars and ninety-one cents.
I get a motion from Jen, seconded by Joe, all in favor?
The second, uh, second warrant is in the amount of six thousand five hundred fifty-five dollars and fifty-seven cents.
I have a motion by Laura, seconded by Chris, all in favor?
Uh, third warrant in the amount of twenty-seven thousand four hundred fifty-nine dollars and ninety-nine cents.
Motion by Jen, seconded by Megan, all in favor?
Uh, fourth warrant in the amount of twenty thousand, uh, four hundred thirty-eight dollars and seventy-two cents.
I have a motion by Jim, seconded by Joe, all in favor?
Fifth warrant in the amount of one hundred eighty-three thousand six hundred fifty-six dollars and nineteen cents.
I have a motion by Chris, seconded by Laura, all in favor?
And finally, the, what's that, the sixth, sixth, sixth warrant in the amount of two hundred thirty-one thousand five hundred forty-three dollars and eighty-five cents.
I have a motion by Jen, seconded by Jim, all in favor?
Uh, this, also in your packet is a, a budget update for your review. That does not need a vote.
Alright, and before we close out, I do have some gifts as well. Um, I will read these all off first and then we will like go on all of this, uh, together. We can do that. Um, first gift that we have here is, uh, for the Friends of Milford Area Special Olympics, uh, for, you know, for the Milford Special Olympics, of one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. Very nice, thank you. The next one we have is from Framingham State University, um, for three thousand five hundred dollars for academic support tutoring. That's generous. We also have another one for the family, Milford Family Network Helpers. Um, and that is in the total of nine hundred dollars. Thank you. I also have another one here from Milford Cares. And this one is gonna be donated to Shining Star in the total of four hundred and fifty-two dollars and ten cents. Thank you. Also have one from Bevelacor Paving, um, for the Milford Special Olympics in the total of five hundred and fifty dollars. That is good money today. And last one that I have is a, is a donation from Patricia McCarron, McGrattan, I'm sorry, for Jackie's Boutique. And it is what looks like to be a pretty cool prom dress for a donation, so that's, that's really nice. Do I have a motion to accept all these gifts? Motion by Jim, seconded by Joe, all in favor? Awesome. Thank you, thank you, Craig. Next on the agenda is subcommittees. What we have here, I'm sorry, first one is, uh, marketing and communications, Jim or Joe, you don't need? Just take the phone up.
I didn't make it to the last meeting.
No.
Did you make it?
I did, yeah. So just two quick, two quick takeaways from that. We're continuing our, um, administrative showcase, so, uh, in our partnership with W M R C, um, we've, so far we've had Lucy Jenkins from S E L, um, to talk about S E L, excuse me. And then we've also had, um, Pete Boucher. And what we're trying to do is showcase some of the lesser marquee sports. So, um, last, uh, go around, we had Derek Rosen, who's a varsity track coach. We're gonna continue our cadence on that. Um, we're also gonna continue our cadence with Lucy, um, and open it up to, um, showcase our administration across the district. Um, the other thing that I wanted to focus on or just mention is that we are moving forward with our job shadowing program with Del EMC. I've been able to make some inroads there, had a conversation with Josh about that today. Uh, so it's something we wanna showcase moving forward as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. And that's all we have, the subcommittee updates. Um, next on the agenda is future agenda items. Anybody have anything to add?
Do you wanna go first on yours or?
Chris, um, hold on, yeah, um, real quick, I had one on here. Um, I think you all got an email from Kevin talking about the field trip for the user class it was going. Um, we looked at it, it looks like it might need some new wording for that because where the event was being held was an amusement park and that's one of the things we don't allow field trips to for that one reason. So I think it'd be good if we put that policy on the future agendas. You guys can take a look at it, see how we can get that going, if that works.
So does that go to the policies subcommittee?
That'd be the policy sub, yes, yes. Yeah, policies sub, yes, yes. Um, that's that. Also, I think if we could, you know, I think there was some talk as well, Kevin, if we could took, look into future items of, um, getting forums going, um, in some other way or form for the community to be informed about what we're going to do and how can we address some issues.
Yeah, so, and I can, I can comment on that kinda quickly. Um, one of the things we're in the process of doing right now is doing the full schedule for next year in terms of night events. And we have to get back to school nights scheduled and all, and, and contract is requiring us to schedule other things in the summer, um, for the school year. And so we, we do that over the next probably four to six weeks. And then we try to get like a whole calendar out there. So there's, we, we've, we've, we've probably have over, really when you c- consider like s- you know, sporting events and everything else, there's well over a thousand events that happen over the course of the school year. We have a hundred and eighty days, so there's, inevitably it's gonna be conflicts. But what we try to do is minimize those conflicts as much as possible. And so I would say probably sometime in July, we'll have a better sense of the calendar. And it's still a little bit of a moving target all year, but we tend to do that, like, probably by mid-July we have it kinda laid out.
Alright, um, I would also like to, um, I've got a little something I'd like to say before we go any further. Um.
Is this your old business or?
We really told it, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, no. Are we done with future agenda items? I'm sorry, well, so.
The only other thing I, oh, go, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Well, we had talked about homework and I know Tim referenced it. Do we have, will we have an update?
Next meeting.
Next meeting that's going on the, perfect, okay.
I guess, yeah, from the future agenda, I know that, you know, there has been talk in, in as far as this long-range education plan. And I know right now it's, you have stated that, you know, you're, you're hoping between that September, October timeframe. I'm just looking to see if we can really lock in a specific date, you know.
Mm-hmm.
You know, as, much as, just like we talked about, uh, the assessment. Let's, let's try to look at, uh, specific dates for it so it doesn't get pushed out too far or too long, you know, um.
Yeah, so I, one of the things we're doing is we're reconvening the, um, long-range education plan committee.
Right.
Which, the first meeting of that was the N E S D E C presentation. Uh, we took a break for a few months as they were doing that work.
Right.
So I think once we convene that meeting, we'll set it, we'll set a target date. I don't wanna do that without the rest of the committee.
Right, yeah, and so I, but, again, I just don't want it to get pushed out, yeah.
Yeah, so I would say, I would say probably by the June, yeah, yeah. So probably, what I would say is probably by the June, um, twenty-first meeting, probably all the date for the committee.
Okay, great.
Or at least a target date.
Target date, yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, sounds good.
Alright, old business. Everybody got any old business? No? Alright, so I'd like to, um, just touch on something that was brought up recently at our, our town meeting. Um, I came up with a little statement, you know, with, helps some of my, um, fellow members here. Um, so if you don't mind, I'd like to read this. Uh, we are grateful that the support of the Milford residents and town meeting members, the F Y nineteen school district budget was approved this past Monday evening. This budget is going to sustain a number of initiatives that are already well underway. In addition, it will support needed growth and development for our curriculum and it will allow us to continue our focus on meeting the needs of our, of our diverse learners at all of our schools. Prior to this meeting, town hall meeting, a citizen approached the superintendent and the school committee with some questions about ways in which the district was planning to address the topic of school choice and long-range planning. These are the questions that have been previously asked and addressed by our school administration and school committee. This individual's questions were answered in the following manner. The superintendent was asked about the district's long-range plan. Response is that we are in the midst of creating this plan with the input from the N E S D E C, which is a consulting firm that specializes in this type of work. Communication with N E S D E C has been ongoing over the course of this school year and as a result of their input, we are better positioned to finalize our long-range goals and plans and to determine our next steps for the Milford Public Schools. Uh, number two, the individual, individual also asked about the ways in which the Milford Public Schools are being informed of the district's future planning. The response is that the superintendent will be scheduling several forums during the upcoming school year, which will focus on the long-range plan, the budget process, and the ways that the student group, growth and performance are being assessed. The district has held forums on various topics each year. So this remains a continuation of our practices. The superintendent sets the agenda for these forums and the school committee supports these means of connecting with families and interest, and interested community members as well. And last, number three, in regards to the budget, superintendent also informed the citizens that the school committee, superintendent, and assistant superintendents will continue to meet regularly with the town's finance committee prior to representing, I'm sorry, prior to presenting if a proposed budget to the two thousand nineteen town meeting. This was already discussed point, discussion point in a, pointed in a public meeting between the school committee and the finance committee. We all believe that open, consistent communication between the school committee and finance committee is beneficial for everyone. And I think we're doing a really good job of getting with those guys and, and hash, you know, everything that we need to know. 'Cause I know in the last couple of years, what's going on, we're all asking questions. So these meetings are, are great with the, the FinCom. Um, also, you know, to, to finish this off, it's important for the community to understand that the Milford School Committee has not entered in any agreement with any individual or any group, despite the wording that was made at the sum, that, despite the wording that was made public by some people. Our school committee operates in open forum and meetings that are posted as directed by law. We look forward to work ahead, look ahead, and support the education of Milford's children for years to come. Um, that's just something that I wanted to get out there and to leave some concerns on how some things were said. We're always doing the best that we can for our children. That's the end result and the end goal that we all try to do. Things might get said wrong, people hear things. That's my two cents. And like I said, I've worked with a couple of people on this, so I don't know if anyone wants to add to it or anybody else have any concerns or anything like that they wanna bring up?
Just, uh, just add, yeah, thank you for, for addressing that. It certainly was a concern as a town meeting member, myself, some of that, uh, verbiage terminology that was used as far as agreement, um, was a little bit concerning knowing that we hadn't met as a, a collective body or made any type of voting. But, so it's good, you know, I think the, you know, the individual brought up some very good points. Uh, there are things that we can filter through and, and use to better our school department. And I know certainly as we're always looking to, to become better and, you know, school choice numbers are, are telling. So we do wanna change those ties. So I think it's, you know, it's not an agreement, but we're looking at the, you know, those concerns in good faith and then certainly can, can utilize that again as to- and then certainly can, can utilize that again as to, as, as talking points throughout our committee. You know, so that way, you know, the, those, we can turn those tides of, uh, the school choice. So, but thanks again for addressing that.
Does anybody else have any old business? Alright, I, uh, move to rejoin this meeting. Can I get a motion? Motion by Jim, seconded by Megan, all in favor? Thank you, have a good night.